to present your rendition of Oh Canada. Thank you for joining with us. This time I'd like to ask councillor Iannoni to lead us in prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could all bow our heads and join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. We need not temptations but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, power and glory, for ever and ever, amen.
The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the council minutes of June 23rd. I have a motion by councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor Maves, to adopt the minutes. Are there any changes or questions or deletions with respect to the minutes? Having seen none, we'll put the question, all those in favor. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. This time I'll ask for any disclosures of a pecuniary interest at this point from any members of council. Councillor Wayne?
Yes, I have an indirect pecuniary interest on bylaw 2008-117 due to my spouse's employment.
So noted. Councillor Carroll?
Thank you, Your Worship, on F 2008-26 on the tax rebate. We had some properties that were closed down. There's some tax rebates, so I'm declaring a conflict on five of those items.
So noted as well. Councillor Fisher?
I also have a conflict on check 320290, a tax rebate.
Okay. Are there any others? Thank you very much. Moving on, our first deputation this evening is a presentation by Mr. Dennis Paris, the board chair for the Niagara Economic Development Corporation, who's joined by the chief executive officer, Mr. Patrick Gedge. Welcome, gentlemen, and I guess Dennis, you'll be speaking first.
We'll speak together, but I'll take the lead on this.
Good, thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you.
Nice to have you here.
Please.
Again, thank you for the opportunity to present before you. I'd like to basically take the time to give you an overview through some slides of what the NEDC is about, and afterwards we can handle some questions. And I'll direct you to the screen here. Basically, we're the Regional Economic Development Agency, and we're a not-for-profit corporation. And the economic development and regional tourism was combined in 1995 under NEDC. There's 13 voting members on our board. I'm the chair. They're a combination of private sector and institutional, and four of those are elected. Myself, I have a manufacturing company in Grimsby. Don Wilson, who's with DTZ, Zed. Barnicki in Niagara. Peter Partington, regional chair. And Paul Andre Bosk, who's the vice president of marketing administration of Chateau Des Charmes. Colleen Blake, executive director Shaw Festival Theater Foundation. Raj Picard, he's the CEO of Westbrook Floral. Jack Lightstone, he's the president of Brock University. Damien Goldberg, mayor of city of Welland. Ryan McMullen, mayor of city of St. Catherine's. Mayor Ted Salsey of Niagara Falls. Mary Turner, vice president, credit risk management and COO of Canadian Tire Bank. And Steve Wallensteinholm, vice president of operations of Fallview Casino Resort. The reason I list these out is only to show you that the board is consist of senior and experienced people from the region who represent various sectors. And we try to get a balance between institutional, public, and different geographical. The functions that we have are basically four. The economic strategy and the economic policy advocacy for the Niagara region. That's the first. The second is external marketing of Niagara, and that involves business attraction and tourism marketing. Third is business retention and expansion, BRNE. Here we're splitting, there are five municipalities. Niagara Falls is one of those that have their own BRNE function in terms of the EDOs. And so the other areas that don't have economic development officers, that responsibility falls on our NEDCO to assist them. We work together with the EDOs in the five municipalities to help in any way that we can. It's really a concerted effort. But in the case of the five municipalities, our focus is outside their focus, is the business retention and expansion. So in the case here, we would work with Serge on issues that would involve Niagara Falls. And the fourth one is smart growth and brownfield development. There's an annual programming process. First of all, it all starts off with the programs that are directly tied to the regional council business plan. So we take, we go from their business plan and their economic growth strategy, and we then set our programs, make sure that they're in sync with those. And so we review, we set up our program or modify it. We basically have a program, and each year we modify it based on any changes that are coming from the regional council plan. And that is reviewed by the municipal EDOs and the local DMOs. So we're, we put it together, we review it then, we discuss it, and then it's brought to the board, the NEDC board, for discussion and review, and hopefully approval. And after that, we then go to council for a budget request. And that's the process of how we work. The economic development roles, there was a review last year at the CAO's request and report, which reported back to regional council. There was some questions of whether or not there was any duplication. And it was a fair question to ask, and there was a good amount of time put into looking at this to see if there was any duplication. Because of the fact that we do have local EDOs, and we do have a regional EDO effort, and want to make sure that there wasn't any disconnects. And the report that came back basically said, for all intents and purposes, there wasn't any disconnects. There were some adjustments, and there was an effort to put some things out on paper just to clarify some issues, and some of that is still going on. But the outcome of that basically was a reemphasis of the fact that municipal focus is business retention and expansion, and that NED's focus is the external marketing. And the NEDCs and EDOs form Team Niagara. What that is, is from the outside point of view, looking at the Niagara region, we're Team Niagara. It doesn't, it doesn't matter whether it's a regional EDO or NEDC. Together, we represent Niagara as Team Niagara. Whoops, I went back. Did I go back? Hang on a second. Did I right-click?
No, go back.
Previous. Is that the right one? On the tourism side, make sure I didn't skip a slide here. Here's how the tourism part works out. It's a part that would obviously interest all of you, because tourism is such an important part of Niagara, as follows its economy. Now, the left-hand column is the actual top, the actual subject. So the structure, Tourism Niagara, NEDCO, is basically a service to all organization. The Niagara Falls Tourism is a membership organization. The focus on Tourism Niagara is the region and the 12 municipalities. The focus of Niagara Falls Tourism is the city of Niagara Falls. The primary markets for Tourism Niagara is regional Ontario and Quebec. With Niagara Falls Tourism, it's international. We're not overlapping. In terms of trade shows, we don't do that, but Niagara Falls Tourism does. In the case of consumer shows, Tourism Niagara does that, and Niagara Falls Tourism doesn't. And what I should say is that this is an agreed split of the work between ourselves and Niagara Falls Tourism. This is how we split up the functions. In the case of media relations resource, we handle that, they don't. In terms of meetings and conventions, we have nothing to do with that. That's all done by Niagara Falls Tourism, and events and festivals are all done by Niagara Falls Tourism. So this is probably a helpful thing we can come back to with questions, but this is how we sort of split up the work between the two parties in terms of the tourism. The Gateway Visitor Center, which has been a topic recently that came up at council here, that was originally mandated by regional council in 2001, and is a 10-year commitment to the facility that's there. It's a rented facility as far as space. You don't own the building, it's just a location. It hosts the visitor information services. It also hosts Grimsby's Chamber of Commerce in the same location. There's brochure distribution. We have sales of all the accommodations and attraction tickets that are handled through that site. And another thing that's handled is all phone calls, all emails to Tourism Niagara are handled at that site. It has to be handled somewhere, so they handle that. The annual net cost of that location is $47,000. We have revenues of $82,000, expenses of $129,000, so the net shortfall is $47,000. The brochure distribution, it's equally available to every organization in Niagara. There's 118 partners, of which a third are Niagara Falls companies. So you know that, Niagara Falls-based firms. There's a $300 to $400 annual fee for posting brochures there, and that revenue represents 34% or 42% of the total revenue of Gateway. There's a couple of other things I want to tell you about. One is the Season, I think it's in your package there. Niagara Seasons, that's in your package. This is a publication that's put together between Tourism Niagara and Niagara Falls Tourism. Well, it's not in your package, sorry. Okay, sorry about that. And so this is put together between those two. It actually was something that was being done by NEDC for a number of years, and then it was adjusted when Niagara Falls Tourism got together with NEDC. There's an editorial board that is composed of the representatives from all the DMOs that put together this magazine. This is, we produce 400,000 of these magazines. And these are on, these are displayed, and these are available at the Gateway Center and many other locations, obviously, because they couldn't handle it there. I wanted to share that, that's one of the issues. Patrick, maybe you want to fill in a few things, because I've kind of run out of line quickly, but is there anything more you want to add here that I've missed in this quick overview?
I think as you've really covered the spectrum, I'd just make, come back to two points, which is each year when we develop our programs for the upcoming year, we review them with all of the economic development officers and all of the destination marketing organizations. And the objective there is to really say, okay, here's our draft plans for the next year. Is there something that we're doing that you don't think we should be doing? Is there something that we're not doing that you think we should do? And is there some program in there that you think we should make adjustments to that would better meet your needs as an EDO or a DMO? And then based on that feedback, it then goes to the NEDC board and to regional councils. So there's a consultation process that's very important in terms of linking ourselves to the EDOs and the DMOs. And the other part is just that little chart that had the separation of functions between Niagara Falls Tourism and Tourism Niagara. That's something that we worked out a couple of years ago with Niagara Falls Tourism, because we did notice that in some cases we were duplicating what we were doing. So for example, you would go to a trade show, and you'd discover one booth would be Niagara Falls Tourism, and another booth would be Tourism Niagara. And that just didn't make sense in terms of cost-effectiveness. So at the end of the day, for the trade shows, which we think are more international, it's a better fit for Niagara Falls Tourism. And for the consumer shows, where you bring a lot more material about the region as a whole, we partner with the DMOs across the region for those. So we've worked out sort of the separation to make sure that we complement each other as much as possible.
I've been chair for just a year and a half now, and I made a point from the very beginning of getting actively involved to just understand what's happening in the region, how we're functioning, whether or not as a communications in particular were interesting to me, because I had some sense that maybe there was some disconnects. And so I spent a lot of time, and I think Mayor Salsey can attest to that, I spent a lot of time going to meetings, attending different functions, talking, visiting different mayors, just to get us another sense of how it's working. There's obviously a challenge when you have 12 municipalities, five of them with EDOs, that have, they're working kind of together but separately, because everybody reports themselves. So there's a difficulty pulling together that kind of team. And it's really a voluntary thing, because we don't have, nobody has authority over anybody else to speak of, and yet we're expected to work together. So it's a challenge, but I personally don't see anything of a major nature that is off track. I think everything that exists is a result of the political structure we have here in Niagara. And I think there's a really good camaraderie, I think, that exists, that I see among the people in the sphere that I'm exposed to. That doesn't mean we shouldn't have constructive criticism. But I've made an effort personally to get closer, involved in the actual operation. And as a chair, you normally wouldn't do that at the level I have, but I want to make sure that whatever we do is the best for Niagara, so I'm trying to make sure that NEDC fulfills its goal. So can we take some questions?
Thank you, Dennis. I make sure there are a few questions from members of council and through the chair, councillor Thompson?
Yes, thank you very much, and welcome. I hope you didn't read Saturday Review. Nope, that's good. Says, "Coming up, two fresh meals for the Lions' Day."
I'm a little overweighted.
I appreciate the hyperbole, but it really doesn't come out in the article. In fact, some of the weak suggestions that you're coming here to be attacked, like so many other people, is, in my opinion, totally out of line. And suggesting that it's inappropriate for members of council to request people to come here to have more open communication and dialogue, I think is rather ridiculous. There's a suggestion here that I asked former member of parliament, Art Maves, and from the other end of the city, Tim Houda, to come here to answer questions with respect to their provincial activities. First of all, you shouldn't have to request them. You think they'd want to come here and express their opinion and have the opportunity to tell the public what they're doing and what it's all about. And particularly when I point the finger at the provincial government at that particular time, and it still doesn't get across to some people that our infrastructure, our decaying infrastructure is happening today as a result of decisions that were made with the Harris government in taking away all of their subsidies for the sewer and water, in fact, transit and other things that were taken away. Almost $5 million, Mr. Burden, can you confirm that, just so people know what I'm talking about? And that was in this year?
Chair, that was part of the common sense revolution.
Okay, thank you. Anyway, I take strong issue inviting you here to do anything but to improve our communication and try to make economic development a better situation in the region. And I challenge anybody to try to suggest that I am not one of the most enthusiastic producers of enthusiasm for the city of Niagara Falls and also the region. So I was personally offended by this article, and I think it was totally unfair of the mind. And I welcome you here to have further discussion and dialogue on this matter. In my opinion, several months ago, we were supposed to have a report back to this council with respect of a memorandum agreement with the NEDC and all of the EDOs and the municipalities to come to agreement. That was supposed to come back to this council. Never sought. In fact, the information provided on the weekend, that I spent a considerable amount of time reading, was enlightening, and I did have a better appreciation of what is going on. But there's no question in my mind, if you go back two years, and maybe before councillor Puttig got on the region, I believe that there's been some real concerns with respect to what the economic development department were doing with the local municipalities. I think there's been dialogue and discussion, and maybe through the chair, I could ask Mr. McDonald. I understand that the memorandum of understanding was never totally agreed to. Is that why it didn't come back to this council?
Mr. McDonald?
That's correct, and Serge may add to it, but we were working on a memorandum, and it was decided partly through the process that it would be more appropriate for our report to be prepared, which was coordinated by Mike Trojan, the CAO of the region. So that report actually was prepared that addressed all these key issues, and that actually, I'm pretty sure, was brought to council, and council reviewed that. But it really addressed, in essence, the concerns that were expressed and a way forward in terms of how communication would be improved. So it wasn't, it ended up not to be a memorandum, but actually a report.
And was that given to this council?
Yes, it was.
When?
Serge may remember the date.
Phil, say?
Okay. I don't recall it, and I'll be anxious to see what was said in that. Anyway, I was on the region for some time, and I can see the budget. You're now at approximately $2 million?
Correct.
And you received recently some provincial money, a substantial amount of provincial money?
Yes, we did.
And can you explain what that is for?
Sure. The funding was provided by the Ministry of Economic Development and Trade, and it was identified for a number of different projects. You have to excuse me, I'm going to have to go by memory here. One portion of the funding, sorry, the total funding was $900,000 from the Ministry of Economic Development and Trade. And the projects that was allocated for, by the Ministry of Economic Development and Trade, number one was for the development of new economic clusters for Niagara, so that as we're not just building on the existing strengths that we have, but we're also trying to identify where will the future economy grow, and what are those very small clusters that we have today that in the future could become very large clusters, and therefore very large employment areas for people in Niagara. And so that was a major allocation. Secondly, it was for the development of both branding and marketing materials, so that when we actually go out and do the external marketing of Niagara, we've actually got a story to tell, and we have all of the materials that work together consistently, so that we can better market the region. Thirdly, there was a focus on local food initiative. It's one of the areas that people in the agricultural community have a particular concern over. And there was funding for the development of a better way to particularly work with consumers to get them interested in buying locally as opposed to buying elsewhere. And then there was one other element, I can't remember off the top of my head.
The size of the budget. I know what our budget is locally here, and it's been basically the same for the past 10 years or more, and yet we see the budget at the region totally escalating on an annual basis, and the number of bodies that you have up there. And yet, what I see and what you're telling me here is you're now going to be doing external marketing and prospecting for clients, and the local EDOs are doing their local municipality. Can you tell me what your plan is, what you brought in, how successful you've been? And I think it's only a short time that you've been doing this.
Yeah, the plan is actually underway. We're going through a branding process that will identify how we should best position ourselves in the marketplace. And based upon that and the other research, particularly on the new cluster development, that will help identify who we should target in the marketplace in terms of getting the Niagara message out, and where we believe that we have competitive advantage. And so we expect that we'll have that plan in place before the end of this year, and it will form the basis of both our funding as well as our business plan for 2009.
So you really haven't done any external marketing to this point?
No, there's been external marketing, but it's been more in terms of the traditional industry. So for example, over the last couple of years, we've particularly focused on the automotive and transportation area of manufacturing, because in fact, that makes up 46% of all manufacturing. So we've worked with the local EDOs in terms of both business retention and expansion by working with the automotive side in terms of identifying potential new business opportunities. And at the same time, we've been talking with automotive suppliers, particularly tier two and tier three in other markets, in order to make them aware that Niagara is in fact a successful manufacturing area. And our belief is that over time, we in fact can be part, a stronger part of the supplier chain, particularly for the new domestics who are still building up their market share and their sales.
So you're now meeting with the EDOs and the CAOs on a regular basis? How often do you meet?
I would say the EDOs and ourselves meet probably every two to three weeks. Sometimes we'll have a general meeting, sometimes it'll be very specific to one of our initiatives. In terms of the destination marketing organizations, we probably meet about every one to two months. And then in terms of the CAOs, we don't have any formal meeting scheduled with the CAOs themselves.
But I'd say that my understanding, as I watch it, is that there's a regular conversation on a daily basis with different people, like the EDOs. Like Serge might talk specifically with Patrick over some issue, and then he's talking with Jim T. Bear or someone else. So there's regular conversations. But I presume your question was, they sit down as a group on a regular basis, and I think that's what Patrick was answering. And that's a challenge, because the group, the group all reports to different people, so it's a communications thing. It's meant to try and hopefully improve the communications of what's going on, so they all know what everybody's working on. So you don't find out that somebody over in Welland's doing something you didn't know about.
Some time ago, when we were in budget discussions, and I guess as my role as chairman of Niagara Falls Tourism, and the challenges that we have, both getting visitors to come to our community, but also from a budget point of view. And it's always been difficult for me to try to explain the difference between Niagara Falls, who was a tourist, first-class tourist destination, compared to the 12 other municipalities. And I'm not suggesting certainly Niagara and the lake is in the tourist business. Maybe Fort Erie to a certain extent, certainly the wine country is a factor. But when you look at the rest of the region, when you take Niagara Falls, and you start trying to split up the pie, if something is done on a regional basis, I know from being there, we're the last ones that are going to get the nod from 11 other people around the table when it comes to any consideration. And it makes it very difficult for us. And I was suggesting that let us keep our money and put it into the Niagara Falls Tourism, rather than sending it up and getting it lost in the region. And I said to a reporter today, who was questioning me about some issues, that how Niagara Falls goes in tourism, so the region goes. So if we are without funds and don't have the ability to market properly, then certainly, everybody's going to suffer as a result. Let's all concentrate on the world brand, Niagara Falls, and make sure that when they get here, you market them out through billboards and pamphlets and leaflets, to all of the regional fairs and events, and get them that way. And we have a constant problem here, trying to convince people that Niagara Falls is unique and special and deserves special consideration. Doesn't sound good, but it's a real difficult situation to get across. And how do we solve that problem? Could we not be on our own, on a local level, and say, okay, you look after the other 11 municipalities, and let us do our own thing? municipalities and let us do our own thing. Bring the people here and let us be successful and everybody else is gonna be successful as a result.
I'd say that it's a strategy of how we think this of. People are coming to Niagara region for an experience. Anywhere you go in the world, they know Niagara Falls, they don't know Toronto. You can go to places, if you're from Niagara Falls, they understand that. The, so Niagara Falls is an icon, there's no question about it. It's the kingpin of the whole thing. But what we really wanna do is get people to spend more time here, more nights in Niagara. And we need to offer them an experience before they come because people are going on the internet, they're looking up what am I gonna do when I get there? And they have to get some sense before they come to this region that there's more things to do in the region that would make them spend more nights here. Clearly with 38,000, 40,000 hotel rooms in Niagara, if people spend more time in Niagara, Niagara Falls is really gonna benefit. So what we see is we wanna present the experience of the Niagara region. There's so many things in this area in terms of arts, in terms of history, in terms of architecture, in terms of agriculture and things that people can really enjoy. You just get off the queenie and start going to other places. So what we see and with us working with Niagara Falls Tourism is to put together a strategy that sells Niagara. They all understand Niagara Falls. They're gonna get off the plane in Toronto and they're gonna drive down Niagara Falls, look at the falls, maybe spend one night or maybe head right back the same day. But if we can get them to understand before they come that there's a bunch of other things to do here, that will really pay off. But if you go on your own, all you're gonna, you're just not gonna get that kind of impact because you're focusing on the icon and they know the icon. It's known.
Well.
That's a view that we have.
We have never said here that we're not interested in people staying longer, that we're not interested in the region being promoted. That's not it at all. We're saying that we're unique, we're different and when you put us in with the other 12 municipalities, we're not gonna get, we're not gonna get fair treatment. I've seen it, I've been there.
If I could just give a couple of examples. Personally, I find the collegiality and the partnership of the tourism industry, for the most part, is wonderful right across the entire region. And, you know, even though folks are in by definition, the other 11 municipalities opposed to Niagara Falls, they have a recognition, and by the way, the consumer research tells us, the icon is Niagara Falls, the icon is Niagara Falls, the icon is Niagara Falls. And it's to the benefit of the other 11 municipalities to leverage the great brand equity that's been built over 100 years in terms of Niagara Falls. What they have to offer, quote Niagara Falls, is a breadth and stretch and a richness of experiences that you can't find within any one municipality. The wine country experience, cycling. So the product mix that is out there and the experiences of the entire region, I think will help support the selling of Niagara Falls. And of course, with 16,000 hotel rooms, by definition, if people are gonna stay over, the major beneficiary is Niagara Falls and that's wonderful. So I think there is a positive synergy between the two. Couple of very specific examples is, for example, we produce Les Saisons. We do marketing into the Quebec market because we think it's a very good market. And so we have publications, Les Saisons.
I'm glad you brought that up. Maybe you can pull that up a little bit. There are four pictures on there. I understand that there was a major issue from Niagara Falls Tourism to try to get a picture of the falls. Why would you ever send a picture or brochure out with, in fact, if you look at, if you look at the pictures on there, the only one that is really identifiable is Niagara Falls. And the information that I got, that that wasn't the original concept that was conceived. And it's because exactly the same thing. Well, how come Niagara Falls is always there? You know? And yet they don't realize that this is the brand that brings people to this region. They can stay here and promote all the way around everything in the region, make them stay here longer, nobody has an argument with that. But we don't get fair treatment when it comes to the total region because they think we have it all there.
I, all I can say is my experience is different in terms of people wanting to work together and their recognition that our cornerstone has to be the icon of Niagara Falls and you build around the benefit of that brand equity. And, you know, I can't comment on one photo versus another photo or the maid of the mist or whatever.
It's the information that was.
Yeah. My only real point is, we're actually complementing what Niagara Falls Tourism does because they aren't doing marketing into the Quebec marketplace. And we're doing that, we've developed Bonjour Niagara as a site in French and that's what we can use in the Quebec marketplace. And I think just by the partnerships that we've built in terms of tourism Franco-Niagara, that we see that there are partners right across the entire region who see value in marketing to Quebec. So anyhow, it's just one example of how we, how we work on complementing each other.
Now, it wasn't always the way, but there have been substantial improvements and changes and it's as a result of this kind of dialogue and discussion, maybe not so public, but anyway, this doesn't hurt the situation either.
And Serge, if I could just comment on that. It is a very fair comment to say, and I'll just pick four years ago because I started three and something ago. People seem to rarely meet, you know, between, at the working level, between economic development and destination marketing organizations in the region. And that's one of the things that takes a while. But as I talked about earlier, in terms of the numbers of meetings that we have, in terms of presenting ourselves as Team Niagara, in terms of working together to do, you know, one publication that goes to the outside world, 400,000 copies, I think there's a, at a working relationship level, we're getting to where we gotta be. And I think that's a real positive over the last few years.
And I agree 100% that the perception was before that the ED officers, and I have trouble getting Serge up to speed because he wants to stay out of this debate, but very little contact with the region and the, and the NEDC at all. And the same with Fort Erie. And councillor at the region from Port Colbrun saying, who are they? We don't know who they are. So I agree, there has been a concerted effort and I compliment councillor Puttig for making this one of his issues over the last couple of years, which is not a negative, but a very positive thing to try to bring things together. Now.
Councillor Thompson, I do have others, so if you could just make your last point, I'd appreciate it. We have others who wanna speak.
Okay, do we have a time limit? I didn't know there was a time limit on speakers.
Well, we're moving on, so.
Where does it say there's a time limit on speakers?
I'm just asking if you could ask more questions.
Well, I'm gonna ask some more questions. Is there a time limit or isn't there?
Well, we actually try to stick to 10 minutes, but.
There's no 10-minute law with respect to people, people speaking.
We have others who'd like to speak.
Please don't interrupt me.
Excuse me.
Anyway.
I'm just asking for the consideration, are there other councillors who wish to speak?
Just bang it again.
Excuse me? Councillor?
Anyway, do you have, how many people working with you?
In terms of the organization?
Yeah, how many people are working?
So it's 17 FTEs.
17. And if, can you give me some idea of the collaborative efforts and how much, what has come into the city of Niagara Falls with respect to these efforts? 17 people and I think how many we have here? Five?
Certainly if you take a look at our annual report and you look at all of the deliverables and the programs and projects, I can literally go over it, one by which, but that provides, I hope, a good basis of information for the council to take a look in terms of what we produce on a manual basis.
Part of this, as you, as you brought up, as we were talking about here, is that the strategy we put into place takes some time to get wound up and start to really have impact. The working together that's only taken place strongly in the last three or four years is having its effect.
Mainly two years, I think.
Couple of years. And so some of these things take time, especially because we're at the, we're at the strategic level mostly, whereas the EDOs, regional EDOs are much more at the tactical level and we work with them. So it's really, it's really not a single thing that Nedco does. It's really a group EDO effort in the region. And there's many cases where, where we're helpful to the local EDO or the other way around, where they're helpful to us, where they take the lead.
Anyway, I'll try to conclude. I'm pleased that you're here and I think that there have been a lot of changes in the last couple of years and they have been of a positive nature. I get concerned when I see the 207 tourism investment highlights by NEDC. Two casinos for Niagara, I thought we did that like 10, 15 years ago. $32 million facelift for Table Rock. New convention center moves forward in Niagara Falls and Food and Wine Jazz Festival debut in Port Colbrun. You know, 17 people, I guess you only have two that work in tourism, is that accurate?
No, it's not. In fact, it depends whether you include the Gateway Information Center. If you include that, it's about two and a half FTEs approximately. And then in terms of the tourism, outside of that tourism group right now is two FTEs. So that's in total four and a half.
All right.
Yes. You said a festival, the slide up there says that they don't do festivals at the very bottom of it.
Anyway, I could probably be up here for another 20 minutes, but I appreciate your coming and I think we got a ways to go. I think the tourism situation, I'd like to see a lot of dialogue and discussion on that to improve what we're doing down here and help everybody in the region as a result of being more effective and bringing more people here. I hope that there is very good rapport and dialogue back and forth with the EDOs and maybe we're on the right track. Thank you.
I have councillor Iononi and councillor Diadadi next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Three of the two speakers. You're undergoing this rebranding exercise with the provincial funding. One of the questions I have is who will implement the fundings, who will implement the funding of the rebranding exercise?
Most of the funding from the branding exercise has come from Ministry of Tourism on the tourism side, plus the private sector in the tourism industry. And then on the economic development side, most of the funding's coming from Ministry of Economic Development and Trade.
Okay. I see Niagara Falls Tourism and Tourism Niagara up there, which that is really confusing.
Yeah.
And I'm sure it confuses a lot of people, but where's the Chamber of Commerce in this? Our Chamber of Commerce has 780 members, 100 hotels. Do you have an active relationship with our Chamber of Commerce?
It depends on the individual Chamber of Commerce, on a number of advocacy issues. For example, when we talk about different policies with respect to provincial government or the federal government, we would find that in terms of what position the Chamber is taking and what position we may be taking, we in fact be mutually supportive. And in fact, we think that that's very positive because it starts to show there's broader support on a particular issue across the business community.
Well, it wouldn't make sense to me for you to be at cross purposes. You, we're all looking for the same thing, I would assume. Who will be administering the funding to the market, the new brand?
Administering the funding?
Yes.
And Niagara Economic Development Corporation because the contract is between NEDC and the Ministry of Economic Development and Trade. And in that contract, it has the specific projects, the resource allocations and the deliverables that have to be achieved in order for that funding to take place on each of the projects.
Thank you. Will you be forming a new DMO?
I'm sorry?
Are you looking to form a new DMO?
I'm not.
When councillor Thompson talked about Niagara Falls driving the tourism engine, I'm kind of curious as to why you would have to rebrand Niagara Falls. I would think Niagara Falls would be the key marketing tool to brand to the region. Because if I'm, if I'm away and somebody says, where are you from? And I say Grimsby, no offense to Grimsby, don't send me letters. And I say Grimsby, nobody knows what I'm talking about. I just traveled with a girlfriend who lives up in Elmvale, Ontario, and she says she's from Niagara Falls because somebody would say, where's Elmvale?
Sure.
And I mean, immediately people are saying, yeah, I've always wanted to be there, this is where I wanna go. Why are, I don't understand the need to rebrand.
Well, I think, first of all, we go back to the consumer. Best thing you can do in terms of marketing and tourism marketing and frankly, anything, is go back to what the consumer thinks. And so over the past six weeks, a major study is being done by Longwoods in terms of consumer research and it's focused on the northeastern states and focused on really Ontario and Quebec. And it's the basis of that research that they'll come back and talk about what are the perceptions that the consumers have in terms of Niagara Falls, in terms of Niagara, in terms of the different product mix that we have. And the research will also identify what are the, what are the triggers that would cause different segments to want to come here and actually make the decision to come here? And it's the basis upon that research that we're gonna work in terms of having the brand reflect what the research tells us will work best with the consumer. So all I can say is that research should be out literally in the next week or two and then people can take a look at that research and then start to talk about, okay, that tells me better in terms of what can best work with different target markets out there.
Can that research be immediately related to this council? Are those, are those findings public?
Yeah, it's actually not done, it's not packaged yet.
Okay.
And as soon as it is, the research is not for NEDC by its lonesome. We're in fact doing it with industry partners and all of the destination marketing organizations, including Niagara Falls Tourism. So as soon as any of us have it, then it's in the public domain.
See, we're trying to find out what would make them want to come here, spend more time. What is it, everybody knows Niagara Falls is there, great. And I travel around the world and they ask me where I'm from, I say I'm from Niagara Falls. Okay, it's easy. But if that's all they think that's here, you start talking about businesses and people who are looking to relocate that business side, all we are is a tourism area, then forget about all the rest of the earth that's here. There's no reason to come here and put a plant here because all we are is a Niagara Falls. We need to brand ourselves in a way to make sure that we don't miss out opportunities to do, to bring in people in other industries. That's why the clusters is going on. But specifically to the tourism side, there's much more that can be done here to make this a much more appealing place to come to. Like, I had an experience when I was in Australia where I rented a vehicle and there was a GPS in it. And as I drove around, sorry, Zealand, New Zealand, as I drove around the country and as I drove through a small town, someone would come on and start telling me something about the town. Well, imagine if people can drive around Niagara and be able to drive through any little place and it tells them something about that place, historic, architectural, whatever. Someone in this area needs to put together a business to do these kind of things. There's new ways of making it interesting for people to come to this area. It's not the old tradition. I don't even like brochures, frankly. People go to the internet. They wanna find out before they come what's going on. And so we need to make this a place that when you come here, there's a whole pile of things to do. And that's where the entrepreneurs, the, it isn't gonna, as much as we can do in terms of government to help, it's gonna be individuals who see a business opportunity to expand and we think we can help them by doing this kind of work. So the branding thing is about trying to find out how we attract these people.
And if I could just say, as an irony, may or may not annoy you, I used to work for Canadian Tourism Commission. And it's interesting, most destinations, you know, when you get their marketing material and all that, you start, whoa, this looks great. And quite frankly, most destinations, I use this phrase, market themselves better than their products. And so you, you know, you go on the website, you go on the brochure and think, this is great, and you book yourself for four days and then after three hours, you're going, that's all there is? So the irony is, we have more product and more experiences in Niagara, and I say Niagara as a whole, than I think any of our marketing really portrays or that the consumer thinks. I don't think the consumer has any understanding of the type of experiences and products that we have in Niagara Falls, in Niagara, in the year 2008. I think, the consumer research can prove me wrong, is that they're thinking of a much different destination from a long time ago. And so I think we're in the position where we have the benefit of a richness of products and experiences that far exceed what the consumer normally thinks about us. And so we gotta get that message out to them. And again, hopefully that will then start to lead from them to say, hey, I was going for one day, I'm gonna go for two. I was gonna go for two days, I'm gonna go for three. And I think that's our overall objective collectively in, in marketing and in tourism.
Okay, thank you. Through you to Serge, how much does our Economic Development Department give to the Niagara Corridor partnership?
Phil City?
Well, we've combined about $7,000 with different partners toward marketing initiatives and mission as part of partnership. So it's kind of, allows to do certain things. And also, what we've done is the oil sanitation, that's where we took about 20 companies, a bit of us out west for a longer time, to make the business management back and so forth. And when we're out there, what we discovered is that 25 or 30 companies that came to us did only jump. And from that, this past year, we helped our first, first trade show at the fall to the consumer. And so that's kind of the initiatives that we're working with the Corridor partnership.
Thank you. So he said $7,000 combined?
No, it was, it was your $7,000.
Okay, that's not overly onerous. One other thing, you know, we're forever hearing and we read it all the time or you hear it when you're talking to the industry, that the perception is Nedco's looking to take over tourism marketing from Niagara Falls Tourism or take tourism marketing from Niagara Falls. So, you know, I'd like you to put it on the floor here on camera, whether that's your intention or not.
Absolutely, totally not.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
Councillor Diadadi, councillor Peter Angelo and councillor Wing.
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today. I'm sure.
So, you know, I'd like you to put it on the floor here on camera, whether that's your intention or not.
Absolutely, totally not.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
I have Counselor Diadadi, Counselor Peter Angelo and Counselor Wing.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today. I'm sure it wasn't on your list of things that you really, really wanted to do necessarily. But thanks for being here. Couple of things. And I agree with a lot of the things that you said in terms of Niagara Falls. It's much more than the sum of the communities. And if you market more and give them an excuse to stay longer, I agree with that. We travel and we always plan through the internet. And, but I guess our concern is that we don't want Niagara Falls to be taken for granted. We realize that this is the icon and there's some concern that you'll water it down. And we just don't want that to happen because I had the experience in the past with the business that my Friday nights were very, very successful on their own with very little marketing. So I put all my efforts into Saturday nights. And what ended up happening was Saturday just wasn't natural and Fridays suffered. And I learned that the hard way. It cost me a lot of money to learn that lesson. But we don't want you to water down Niagara Falls and that's our concern, you know, that we're taken for granted. And I've said this before, but you know, you brush just the teeth you want to keep. And we just don't want anyone to forget to brush the teeth of Niagara Falls, so to speak, if that makes sense. Because a healthy Niagara Falls means a healthy Niagara region. So, and again, I know I'm stressing it, but that's our concern, that we're going to lose focus. Remember, this is the brand. I was just away on a trip a couple of weeks ago and I laughed that the shower head was a Niagara shower head. You know, in a Caribbean country and I thought, you know, the name is so well-known around the world. And if we could just take advantage of it, you know, and if we could put it to good use in a more of a rifle approach, you know, because a shotgun makes a big mess, a rifle makes a hole. And we want to make a hole to get through to the business, and I'm sure. Two questions, and I'm sorry for all the little anecdotes that I use, but that's just me, how to keep it interesting. First question is the brochure space of the gateway. I'm not sure if that question was answered or addressed. You know, we had a concern there that we don't have the representation that we're hoping to get. Do we have that question addressed through you, Your Worship?
Yes, Mr. Gedge.
Sure. Let me just lay out that situation. I wonder if we could go the slide of something. There we go. Oh, no, it's okay, sorry. By the way, just, I'm going to do a little preamble as well since you did. But my metaphors are nowhere as interesting, let me say. Actually, I'm not even sure I use metaphors or know what that word means. But as a marketer, it doesn't matter what I think. It frankly, doesn't matter what you think. What matters is what the consumer thinks. And the programs and the messaging should all go back to the consumers saying, what is the most cost-effective? What is the most effective? And where's our biggest ROI? And to me, and that's why this consumer research, and I know research bores a lot of people, I actually like it. Because if you don't understand the research and don't understand the customer, then actually nothing else matters. And so to me, that's what keeps all of us honest, if you like. It's being able to go back to the research and saying, here's the messaging because of what we learned from the research. This is what's going to work against this target audience and this target audience couldn't care less. And so that's, if you like, how you, to me, you best drive marketing. And I think that keeps us all right and steady. Now I remember your question. In terms of the gateway, let me just basically explain it. Gateway is established in 2001. I think it was September 10th or 11th. 10-year contract as was mentioned earlier. And like any visitor information center, it, 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 it needs an investment. You're not able to generate enough revenue to offset the expenses. And that's normal for most visitor information centers, as someone once said, and like convention centers. It's the nature of the business. So in the case of the gateway, as you see, the annual net cost is about $47,000. Able to get revenues of $82,000. And 42% of that comes from 118 partners throughout the region who will pay for brochure distribution. And so obviously, 117 partners believe that that's a good value proposition in terms of making the $300 or $400 investment. And from our standpoint, it's good because it helps offset the net cost of Gateway. Terms of the brochure rack program, sorry, and of the 118 partners, about 38 or 39 of them are Niagara Falls organizations. So well represented in terms of it, and again, well represented in terms of the value that Niagara Falls operators see in the Gateway distribution program. Terms of the other program, and I'm always careful about talking about someone else's program because I never know it as well. But in meeting with the Chair of the Subcommittee, the way it was explained to me is it's basically 58 partners who make an investment into the tourism rack program. And there are, I can't remember, maybe 200 locations. And so what they're asking about is could we in fact put our tourism rack with 52 brochures up at your gateway?
58, you said.
58, sorry.
You also said 117 firms were happy of 118.
So, hey, as a marketer, my math isn't too hot.
There's one unhappy one.
That's right. So here we're in a situation where 118 partners are paying a fee and see good value. To have a brochure rack go up, even if it were physically possible, for free, i.e. 58 partners would, or 58 organizations would have their brochures up there for free, then obviously what would happen is 118 partners would come back and say, well, look, if they get in for free, then we should get in for free. And then that has an economic consequence. On the side of the brochure rack program, and I understand this totally, they're saying, look, we cannot pay you to have our brochure rack in your establishment. And the reason we can't, just like we're caught in a way, is that if we pay you something for the brochures to be there, then we have our other 200 locations where everyone's going to come back and say, okay, you've established the principle that you pay, now we want to be paid as well in order to have those brochures there. So I think both of us completely recognize and respect each other in terms, in terms of our program construct and what we need in order to make it a cost-effective program. And I think there's a good understanding at a business level between, between both of us.
So, Your Worship, so our rack is going to be in there or no?
Well, Counselor, we did have a two-hour meeting and I think the Chair of the Subcommittee left understanding a little more so and was going back to speak to the other members of the committee.
Okay, okay. Well, then we'll leave that with the committee members to resolve. I just think it would enhance the gateway and it would certainly enhance the, you know, people that were looking for what they're going to do in Niagara Falls. Because a lot of them stopping off there or fueling up, getting some food and their next stop is Niagara Falls before they go off to see the other things possibly. But I'm glad that it's being addressed, Your Worship. And the last question I have is, you know, there's a lot of good comments. I was just flipping through the navigating our future, 2005 to 2010. And I saw a lot of good words like help, attract, support, encourage, develop, explore, et cetera. And my question was, in regard to a comment, I noticed that Mike Trojan had made in his report in September 27th, '07 to the region, that his last bullet was, in order to fully assess the merits of one model over another, there would need to be some consistent set of measures of performance that could be reviewed. Doesn't appear that it currently exists. And that was my question. Those are a lot of good qualitative words.
I see.
Quantitatively, it's, we're going on a year, you know, do we have some measures that we can see the success that we're getting for our investment? Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. And in fact, right now, there's a, there's a process underway where the region is working with other municipalities and other economic development organizations throughout Ontario to try and find a benchmarking way to have measures in economic development. As you would know much better than I, there's all sorts of measures for municipalities in terms of, I don't know, public works and roads and other things. It's, it's never been done in economic development. And I think part of it is every economic development organization is a bit different because the economy and what is needed for a particular area is different. So that benchmarking process is going through as we speak. And I really am very hopeful that as we put together the business plan for 2009, that there will be agreement in terms of what those performance measures are so that we can put those in our business plan and then we can be measured against those performance measures as we go forward.
The hard part is that a lot of those performance measures will be subjective. And so identifying what those are, it's easy to say, you know, how many sales did you make this month and how much profit did you make? And that's why we're trying to find benchmarks from other areas. But we need some kind of benchmarks because anybody can play tennis without a net. You didn't need it. And on the last page of that, on the last page, I like those metaphors too. On the last page of that brochure, there's an indication that we have to have measures. So it's there as part of the deliverables, I believe it's the last page. And that's what we're trying to do because it's, the question is fair. What Counselor Thompson asks is, you know, what have you done for us kind of thing? And we want to be able to answer that, but sometimes those things are subjective. One good thing is, first thing is getting people to work together, making sure the communications are right. There's a great book out right now called The Speed of Trust by Stephen Covey Jr. That basically says, when you don't have trust in people, things take longer and they cost more. When you have trust, things go faster. So the first thing that I felt was important, because my sense was, is to kind of audit the whole business about how are the EDOs and how's everybody working together? They understand everybody's trying to do a good job, but it's not easy, it's subjective, so it's hard to measure sometimes performance. So we're all aware of it and there is an effort in that direction.
I have Counselor Peter Angelo and Counselor Wing.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. And I as well would like to thank the representatives of Nedco for coming down tonight and giving a presentation. I think it's informative, Your Worship, and as a gentleman I've already stressed, you know, it helps to provide a good relationship between, I guess, the Niagara Falls City Council and Nedco. Your Worship, I think when the original motion was brought to council, the intent of the motion was to see whether or not we could get more bang for our buck by taking our dollars out of Nedco and putting them into Niagara Falls Tourism. And I think from my personal opinion, the unfortunate thing about the presentation is that it's become sort of a contrast between what Tourism Niagara does and what Niagara Falls Tourism does. And I would have liked to see it expanded more. I think Nedco has other services that they offer as well. We already have an economic development office here, Your Worship, that we have almost a half dozen staff with. And I mean, as I listened to the presentation from the gentleman from Nedco and they talk about their number one municipal priority. They say their number one municipal priority is business retention and expansion. And I know that that's the exact same number one priority of party EDO. So I mean, I still, I guess I'm not entirely convinced that there isn't a duplication there. I know our staff go out on a daily or weekly basis and visit all of our players in the industrial sectors and make sure that they're happy and see whether or not they can do anything, Your Worship, that would allow them to, I guess, stay or remain in Niagara Falls and help them out with any expansions. So I guess I'm not entirely clear on whether or not there's an overlap there. But as well, I know that we received an email from Counselor Putty. He did have plans to go away. He did postpone his plans to go away. And I'm wondering whether or not, Your Worship, we're going to be asking him to speak to that.
If you, if that's your wish, there's no problem.
I'd like to make a motion then that asks the members of the council, if they have their full say, that we ask Counselor Putty to come report as well.
Okay, I second that. Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Votes carried, thank you. And we do have Counselor Wing.
Could I, could I speak to the point?
Oh, sure.
There may be a misunderstanding about the business retention and expansion. Where there are EDOs in place, such as here in Niagara Falls, that's their role, not our role. But Grimsby, Pelham, places where they don't have EDO officers, Nedco is responsible to take on that role for them because they don't have the resources to do it or to work with them. They don't have a formal EDO function there. So there's not, there's not meant to be a duplication on business retention and expansion in Niagara Falls.
I guess, Your Worship, then, what would come to mind then is that we're paying for someone else's EDO? Or no, that would be incorrect?
You're paying, the part that we would do for Niagara Falls would be the other functions that are on this here. The external marketing, okay, smart growth brownfield development, a number of functions that we work and support. Because even the EDO here doesn't have all the resources in certain cases to be able to do the presentations they want to do with their clients.
Sure. Let me, let me maybe give an example of that. As you go through the different functions, different activities, different projects at any point in time, quite frankly, depending on the project and the activity, it may benefit some areas more than other areas. We're doing a project called Wine Country Enhancement Project. Well, here's a project that would basically, at the end of the day, benefit Niagara Lakes, St. Athens and Nathan and Grimsby. When we were lobbying the provincial government in terms of places to grow and we were talking about the gross house strategy and the importance of having the specific, unique designations in terms of Niagara, two of the things that came out of that, one was the Gateway Economic Zone, which is really Niagara Falls to Fort Erie, and the Gateway Economic Center, which is really down in Welland and Port Coburn. So for that activity, it benefited these communities. So depending on the activity, it may benefit certain other communities a little more and a little less, depending on what that activity is. The question is that as a whole, where are you adding value to the entire region of Niagara? And at the end of the day, have you been able to do enough so that it's actually benefiting all 12 towns?
Thank you. That is your question, Mr. Counselor?
No, but I guess, Your Worship, at the end of the day, we're not in control of whether or not we're part of the program. We've already been told, I guess, by the regional government that we are part of the program. So I mean, that's a cost that our citizens have to bear anyway.
Okay, thank you. I have Counselor Wing and then we'll hear from Counselor Putty.
Thank you. A couple of things struck me when reading the information in tonight's agenda package on this is, one of them is that not all of Niagara Falls residents work in tourism or in our city. A lot of people work in other sectors elsewhere in the region. And when you think about ripple effects as well, I think it was Counselor Diadadi said that the health of the region is linked to the health of our city. Well, I think also, the health of our city is linked to the overall health of the region. The other thing which struck me and it was confirmed tonight is that Niagara branding, Niagara as a regional brand is something very distinct from Niagara Falls as a destination branding. They're two separate but linked things. And visitors who are looking for authentic experiences would really be interested in the richness of experience that the rest of the region has to offer. Things like agritourism, wine tourism, torah dining, the taste of the land dining, things that we don't really focus on offering here, perhaps we can't really offer here, but which will appeal to visitors to our area, help attract and retain visitors to our city. I think there's an important thing going on here, something that we don't quite tap into, but what we need in order for our city to reach its full potential as a tourism destination. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of council? I think none. Counselor Putty.
Mr. Paris, and I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm only going to take about five minutes because I've got a bridge to sell you and maybe I might be able to do it tonight. That's the first time I've seen that presentation. January of '07 is when I asked some questions and I'll just jump along here, Mr. Mayor, because I know this topic could take hours. I've been living with this for about 28 years. But anyway, in January '07, when I said, when Mr. Gedge was doing a branding presentation, and that's about 17 months ago, that I didn't think the presentation was too well. And then Mr., or I should say Counselor Sarocino, which was reported in the press. And it was very, I couldn't believe when he got up and said that they're building an empire. I've never seen you in our city in five years except maybe to cut a ribbon for a bank. And I talked to Mr. Sarocino after that. And as you're probably aware, subsequently, Port Coburn, because they were getting no service, hired their own person who I think was an employee or a former employee of NEDC. Secondly, in regard to the article in the paper, I was at a memorial today for Judge Wallace and I saw my friend John Clement. And he told me 25 years ago, as long as I spell your name correctly, so Corey can write what he wants, I say what I want. And as long as I keep having my meetings with Mr. Dave Martino, which I did six weeks ago on his subject, and I hope to see something come up. However, I just want to read this to you, it'll take 20 seconds. Meet the demand, hand over the report. Alderman Norrie Putty has done a public service by convincing city council that citizens deserve to know the contents of the hidden chamber report questioning the city, region duplicity and departments and staff. And it goes on to say, this is from the chamber. We feel that during a time of economic hardship and fiscal restraint, that that government should be, that government should be looking at all areas of cost-saving without increasing services to its citizens. We realize this is a difficult objective. And that, my friends, was October 28th, 1982. In regard to the Nedco, I've asked for three or four years what they do. Nobody can tell me. From January '07, there was a flurry of meetings arranged, starting with Niagara Falls Tourism, and I have the emails at home. Thank you. We finally are... Thank you, we finally are now getting some cooperation. In regard to, and I'm going to use this name because in my conversations over the last year or 14 months, and I always try to be fair, I said, "Listen, you're not going to tell me something unless I pass it along. I don't care because it's time that we spoke out." And Jim Tebert of the Fort Erie Economic Development Office told me in no uncertain terms that the memorandum of understanding was finally, after three tries, by the mayors and CEOs, and his words, "To hell with it, let's just agree to it and get them out of the way." The chair of the Niagara, of the Fort Erie Economic Development Office, just last May, at Kim Crater's dinner, I had five people come over to me. First thing they said, "How old are you?" And I said, "I'm still fighting this thing." And I was so happy, it was 10 o'clock at night, I was walking out of Club Ataya. The fellow says, "I am a taxpayer, I should have talked to you months ago. I've been on the board in Fort Erie for 10 years, and I don't know what NEDC does." I asked him if he'd come down and talk to some council members. I went away to FCM and came back, and I called and said, "How are you making out?" He said, "Well, I've got to reconsider." And I said, "Why? I've got a lot of friends." This is retired multimillionaire businessman, never met him before in my life. And I, of course, said, which I won't repeat, "Give me the true answer." And he was told to stay out of it. Now, if you take, and by the way, I'm going to end on this for the simple reason, I've been through this since 1966. When you have somebody tell you that it takes two, four, six, eight, 10 years to get an industry in here, that is a lot of hooey. Because I've been 42 years in politics, 35 years in City Hall, and the first three or four years in '66, I was told that, and I've been on a succession of four times 10, and we've lost industry by the hundreds. Duplication. Look in your phone book when you go home, and this is all I'm going to say, Mr. Mayor. You have the biggest waste of millions of dollars in the region, and the reason is the larger cities who tried a number of years ago, I'm told by some councillors, were outvoted by the smaller municipalities because they don't have EDOs. You have nine in there, plus the Ministry of Industry on St. Paul Street, under my friend, Sandra Pupatellum, Ministry of Industry. And the reason, I'm going to leave this with you, I met the premier before the last election at Inniscore. Kim Crater said, "You know Norim," and he said, "He is relentless." And I said to him, "I'm not going to bother you now, premier, but I'm going to be more relentless because you've got to do something about the Niagara region municipalities, and you've got to do something about the NEDC and the duplication." I received a letter 10 days ago from the premier. Not just a written off, thanks for your comments, a personal letter, that he's interested in my comments, finally, and he turned it over to the minister, and they're going to look into it. And I've kept Kim Crater up to date for the last 14 months, and the last email I sent Kim Crater, and a copy to the premier, was when this thing blows, because the ratepayers are going to make a blow. We are wasting so much money, we're losing jobs, 61 in Port Coburn the other day, Can Groove, Nedco was nowhere near it. I asked Lord Mayor Burrows. Debbie Zimmerman was really upset when the Hershey Juice Company, she came in and sat, she sits beside me at the council, and she said the juice factory has closed and so on, and I said, "Was Nedco there?" She said they were never, never near the place. Now, they've had six and a half months to prepare. This afternoon, I came down, my wife's birthday, and I left them there on the lake, not 100 miles from here, celebrating with the family, my grandchildren. But I came down here because this is the second time I've seen Mr. Gedge, even in public. I've had one phone call from him in 15 months, and that was at 9:00 at night, for an apology of one of his secretaries who sent out a derogatory letter about me. "Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. Good to see you, and have a good evening, and I'm going back to the lake. You don't do something, I'm going to get the premier to do it. It's the last bloody thing I do. Believe me." Good night.
Mr. Gedge, Mr. Paris, thank you very much for your attendance this evening. I appreciate your consideration in explaining the position of Nedco. Thank you again. Okay. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit townhomes and semi-detached dwellings at 6269 Dorchester Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, June 13, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question, anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
This time, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlovich?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. The lands involved are 5,000 square meters of, excuse me, land on the west side of Dorchester Road. This is approximately 1.3 acres, excuse me, acres opposite Stoke Street. This land is actually the remnant lands resulting from a severance, which was granted of a single-family dwelling, which is the notch in the corner of the location map ahead of you. The area surrounding the subject site is largely occupied by detached dwellings. There is, however, to the east of Dor, on Dorchester, the former Dorchester Manor Seniors Residence, which is now a residential condominium project. The, can I go back? Dean, can you bring that back one? Thank you. The proposal that council is being asked to consider tonight is for 12 bungalow townhouses to be located on the subject site. You can see the location, there are two blocks of four units and two blocks of two units, so in essence, eight townhouses and two semi-detached units or complexes on the site. The elevation of the building is shown here, so entrances to the fronts of the building, double car garages for each of the units, and the hip-roof bungalows that are proposed for the site. The lands, as I mentioned, are 1.3 acres in size. This proposal is already approved on, or there was already approval on this site for 12 units, which was granted under one of the previous applications. There have actually been four previous zoning applications on this site, and a previously a condominium application, which has now lapsed. The applicant is wishing, therefore, to change the type of dwelling units that are currently provided for under the zoning. The official plan for this area designates the lands as residential. It provides for a variety of housing types and forms of development, and encourages intensification of our vacant residential lands and underutilized parcels. The, as well, the infill developments are to contribute to the supply of housing units and an efficient use of our existing services. The official plan provides for a density of 25 units an acre, which is, sorry, 25 units a hectare, which is 10 units an acre for single and semi-detached, and up to 50 units a hectare, or 20 units an acre, for the townhouse development. The density of this project is 23 units a hectare, which is 9.5 units per acre, so that's low for residential, it's half the density of multiple family. In fact, it's in line with the density that we expect to achieve for single and semi-detached housing. The application is consistent with the provincial policy statement. The zoning for the site is to provide an alternate form of housing to the type of housing that's currently provided. There are 12 units provided for or allowed to zoning on this site now, four single detached dwellings, and eight apartment units. The proposal, as I pointed out, is for 12 townhouse units. They've requested, therefore, a site-specific R4 zone. They require certain provisions to be amended to control the development. They, in fact, are requesting that the height be restricted to 7.5 meters, 25 feet in height, which is less than the standard of the surrounding properties, which would allow a 32-foot-high building. Where each of the units will provide a two-car garage, and there's a setback in front of each of those garages of six meters, which would provide parking in the driveway of each of those units. The amenity area for the, for the units is to be provided in the rear of the property. Typically, we require 7.5 meters of 25 feet. This is being provided on the west side of the development, but the rear yards for the units on the north side would be 6.5 meters of 21 feet. This is still an acceptable level of area. The amenity area for the semi-detached dwellings on the south side would be at the side of each of those units, and the setback at the back of that building would actually be similar to a side yard, which would be, I want to say, 1.5 meters. So the side yard does exceed the minimum standards for a semi-detached. The application, therefore, is being recommended for approval, and as the application does comply with the official plan and provincial policies, and that the application does represent an improved form of development over that, which is already approved, are approved for the site.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlovich. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per Section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to come forward to speak to this bylaw amendment? Is there anyone present other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Okay, having seen none, the council will now hear from the applicant or his representative. For the record, please, if you state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. For the record, my name is Louis Borloni, the last name is spelled B-U-O-R-D-O-L-O-N-E. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council.
Please welcome.
I am a principal in 168846, Ontario Limited, which is the company that has acquired the property, and I would make it poignant and clear to council that we are new owners of this property, and we understand that there, this property has been the issue of a number of previous applications, and we'd like to stress that point and make it clear that we're kind of the new kids on the block here, so to speak. With respect to Mr. Hurlovich's report, through you, Mr. Mayor, we have had an opportunity to review the report and concur with the report, and would, quite frankly, respectfully submit that council approve this application on the basis of staff's report and recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Hurlovich. There may be questions from members of council. Yes, Counselor Carrio.
Thank you, Your Worship. When are you planning to start this project? If we get this approved, I'm sure the neighbors are tired of seeing this.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, as soon as this good council decides that this is something they want us to do, we will move as quickly and expeditiously as possible.
Okay. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. I can share with Counselor Carrio that the neighbors who have brought down here leave the hopper open, not to have...
We should give him a pardon, Pastor.
I guess, Your Worship, as I read the report, I have one question, and I guess either Mr. Borloni or staff can answer it. It is a requirement of this application that the applicant, in the future, apply for this to be part of a condominium in order for it to receive approval. Is that correct?
I believe so. Mr. Borloni, do you want to answer that question?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, indeed.
Do you agree to that?
We will be, as part of the provincial legislation, will be required to make a plan of condominium application. As well, if I just quickly may add, this evening, obviously, we're asking for council support. The application then obviously takes on the next logical stage, which is the site plan approval. So I just want to, for the record, I want to make it clear that, obviously, we then have that process to go through as well.
Certainly. Mr. Hurlovich, you concur, just to answer Counselor Peter Angelo's question?
The, yeah, it's my understanding that the proponent wishes to sell each of the units, and therefore, they would have to go through a condominium process. Just to one point of clarification, and that is, if there's a plan of condominium, it's basically, we look at all the site details, we wouldn't require a site plan for a plan of condominium. If it's a rental project, we would require a site plan.
Great, thank you.
I guess, Your Worship, just to take a little step further, the entire property will be part of a condo appropriation.
Just confirm that, Mr. Borloni, is that correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Your Worship. Finally, an application is proposed, Mr. Hurlovich.
Great. Any other questions of the applicant from members of council? And any other questions from those present? Having seen none, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded in the pleasure of council. Motion by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any further discussion or comment? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Borloni, appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a three-unit-on-street townhouse dwelling at 4415 Montrose Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, June 6, 2008, and by posting a sign on the property in question, anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process if applicable or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you. Once again, I'm going to ask the director of planning to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hurlovich?
Thank you, Your Worship. The application involves a lot on the west side of Montrose Road, almost immediately north of Alpine Drive, in close proximity to the Casino Associates Centre. The, immediately to the north of this property is a chiropractic office. Beyond that, to the north and west, is a large block of land, which is currently under development with a group of townhouse development. Lands to the east are largely industrial, commercial properties. Lands to the south are detached, single-family dwellings. The applicant is proposing a rezoning on this property to allow three on-street townhouses. That is, the three units would be, would front directly onto Montrose Road, each with individual driveways and access. The applicant has a property that's approximately 7,200 square feet in size. The, he's requested a R3 zone. This is our current standard for on-street townhouse development. He's also required, or requested some specific provisions that would deal with the lot coverage, the driveway size, and the side yard setbacks. The official plan designates the lands as residential. Again, it provides for a wide range of housing types and forms. The on-street townhouses are permitted in up to three stories in height, and up to 50 units a hectare, 20 units an acre. The, and they're to be located primarily on collective roads. Infill development is to be compatible with the surrounding area with respect to density, mass, setbacks, and appearance. The requested amendment is appropriate because it represents a modest increase. The current... The current zoning would allow for two units. They're going to increase that to three. It has a density of 45 units a hectare or 18 units an acre, which is less than the maximum allowed by the official plan. It does front onto Montrose Road, which is a major arterial road through the city. The massing and scale of the building is similar to the former development that we expect to see in the area, and certainly that which has already developed. The appearance and the setbacks of the building are consistent with the single-detached dwellings that are currently in the vicinity. The current zoning is a residential, single-family, and two-family zone, an R2 zone. As I mentioned, the applicant has requested an R3 zone for this property to specifically permit the on-street townhouses. There are a number of specific requirements that they're looking to have adjusted, although first of all, the site will provide for each of the units to meet the minimum requirement for lot area for the dwelling, so it does actually meet that standard. They're looking for a reduction in the side yard setback. Typically, on-street townhouses, we require a 9.8-foot setback, usually because on-street townhouses would consist of more than just three units in a row. They're looking for a 5.9-foot setback. This would be similar to the size of setback. In fact, it's greater than the setback you'd get for a semi-detached dwelling, so we do see this as an appropriate setback. And again, because there are only three units, the massing of the building is quite similar to a semi-detached dwelling that I mentioned would already be allowed. The applicant proposes to provide hammerhead-shaped driveways. That is, to allow the cars to back out of the garage, turn around on their own property, and go forward into the traffic on Montrose Road. We see that as a safety issue, and we do support that, but it will require that more of the front yard be used for driveway than the bylaw would normally permit. We are supportive of that. The region does have some concerns, and we will have to work with the region in terms of the ultimate design for those driveways. The parking requirements under the bylaw for on-street townhouses is 1.4 spaces per unit. Therefore, they'd require four total parking spaces. In essence, three parking spaces are technically being provided, although because there's a parking space in the garage and one in the driveway in front of the garage, each unit will actually be providing two parking spaces. So we're satisfied that the parking requirements of the bylaw are being met. So in conclusion, we are supporting this application for the three townhouse units. We believe it complies with the official plan. The zoning is consistent with the surrounding area, and the modifications would represent an appropriate form of development. The recommendation therefore is to support the R3 zone for this project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hurlich. And once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheets will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 34, subsection 19 of the Planning Act. At this time, council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone present who'd like to come forward? Please come forward and state your name and address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody.
My name is Helby Delmundo. I live, I will be the neighbour of the proposed townhouse, and we made a better opposition to this because we would like to maintain the area as a residential, single-family. If this is approved, we will find it difficult to deal with three families living beside us, and the property is not really suited for an artery because we find it very cramped. There's not enough space for them. This was formerly a single-family unit, so we really don't, we don't really feel how three families can live in a property that was only fitted for a single family. There is sufficient parking space. One car is, will be inside the garage, one car will be on the driveway. Suppose there is an emergency, that the car inside the garage will have to come out, but there is another car blocking, so they got to back out to Montrose Road. They'll be creating safety, safety problems there. Montrose Road is a very, very busy street now. It was only a two-street before, now they made it a four-length street to handle this, anticipate the traffic which is happening now also. These residents are pulling in and out of the driveways. There'll be problems for the city, accidents, you know. Firemen will come, ambulance will come, more bother for the city. The city has more reported matters to attend to than this crowded townhouse. The children might not have enough space to play with, and they might stray on the street. Again, there is a safety problem there. Then the noise and disturbances in these families, some of them might have domestic issues. There'll also be loss of privacy. For this matter, it might not be quiet and peaceful and pleasant and very livable in that area anymore. In that area, it's all bungalows, allowing there to be a second-story structure, and it will not look good. I don't know if the owner will bid a pench, will bid a pench to my property and there. Many, a lot of the neighbors are complaining about it, although it's only they are the ones who attended it, me.
Yes, okay.
We are requesting the council to please reconsider this matter, the pluralize. One more thing, if there are visitors going to these families, you know, where will they park? They have to park maybe in Alpine or in the other spaces of the commercial places there. We find that there'll be more problems than what we have now.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Delmundo. We'll see if we can get some of your concerns addressed as well. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good. Is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak as well? Ma'am? Once again, anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask the applicant to come forward, please, and he might be able to address some of the concerns expressed by some of the neighbors. Just for the record, please.
Hi, good evening, your worship, members of council. The owners of the property at 4415 Montrose Road. My name is Michael, last name's Manella, for the record, M-A-N-N-E-L-L-A.
Thank you.
Salvatore.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we both can address the numerous issues, but the neighbour that just spoke, it appears that he has some trouble and some issues with, first of all, parking, and I guess that was a main issue regarding, one of the big issues was the parking. If I can address that first, we are in conformance with what the city allows with a three-unit townhome, and that's 1.4 cars per parking spot, and we're actually allowing and allocating two parking spots per unit. And he also had an issue regarding turning into a major artery, like the Nagger Regional Road, being Montrose Road, and that was the reason for the hammerhead type of turning that we're proposing. We are also in agreement that we don't want, we're concerned for the safety of the people that are doing it. So with that, we've made our drawings conducive, and we've made it knowing that in advance. Also, I might add that we're working with the region currently to just finalize how exactly we're going to make sure that that happens, where they're turning onto the road, not backing onto the road, they're going forwards back on Montrose Road. That was the first issue. That was a major issue as far as their parking was concerned, and I don't, if you can recall enlighten me.
The fence at the rear of the yard, fence?
Okay, and I'm not quite sure where Mr. Delmundo's property is, but it's really only two properties on the south side that would be adversely affected from our development. The third one, it's the first one? Okay, he's the first one. So right now, there's currently a fence there, and we're certainly, if we have to put trees or if we have to put up a bigger fence, we're certainly prepared to do so. But let me, if I can just add also, that currently the property is zoned for an R2 zoning, and the building that we've drawn up, we're very cognizant of the fact of the neighbourhood, and the building that we drew up is actually in, like, we haven't really asked for too much more as far as the height is concerned and the width is concerned, that would fit in the umbrella of an R2 zoning. So we're not asking for too much more, other than the fact that instead of, you know, two homes or two families living there, it'd be three. One other point that I'd like to add is, you know, in the whole realm of things, there's about, Mr. Delmundo spoke about, you know, problems with basically the area itself where it's maybe too congested. Behind us, I think there's about 60 condos going up. So in the whole realm of things, we're kind of a small, very small, minute, I think, if he's looking at the problem from that angle, I think the bigger problem would be to him to address what's going on behind, in that whole big web-shaped area there.
Excuse me, please, let's let him speak, and I'll give you an opportunity. Yes, please, okay.
These, and one other thing, these dwellings are all single-family homes. They're condos, so, well, not condos, they're townhomes. They'll be attached, but they're all, the intent is to sell them to single families. We're not renting them, we're selling them as townhomes. So we, and we're actually in conformance with the area, and we actually think that it's going to increase the value of the area. These homes are very, townhomes have become very popular, and the market value is very expensive for these type of properties. So I don't think we're going to hurt the homeowners in any way in that area by putting those three homes there.
Anything else you'd like to say?
Nothing else.
Okay. Mr. Manella, we do have questions from council, and there may be some from the gallery. Councillor Anoney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the comments in our staff report, in the concerns from the residents that will drop their property values. I mean, I'm watching townhouses go up that are going for 350, 375. What market are you looking at?
Well, we understand that behind us, the condos are going into, starting at a 260 range, and they're bungalows. These particular property, townhomes that we are building are 1,400 square feet, they range from 1,375 to 1,700, depending on how we, how potential buyers would want the, how many bedrooms they want, or we can leave it more of an open concept. So we want to be somewhere in below, somewhere below that bungalow range where it's 260, and quite frankly, we want to make it very marketable to the, maybe the families that are starting out. We know it's a two-story type of development, so we're not, we may not get the seniors, and quite frankly, we're looking somewhere in the 225 range, and that's what we think. They're not low end, no. I mean, we're going 225 as a start, and we've talked to the real estate, been in contact with real estate agents, and they told us a very reasonable comparable is definitely in the 225 range. So hopefully that helps and sheds light on.
Any other questions from members of council? Yes, councillor Lee.
Just the region's concerns. They said in their letter, it's the region's policy to reduce the number of driveway accesses in order to reduce conflicts in traffic, and they've actually asked that this application be deferred to provide an opportunity for regional staff to discuss alternative designs for the driveway with the applicant. Have you met with the region in regards to this, and how is that proceeding?
Yeah, we've met with the regional council there, and of course, just if I can direct you back, our original plan was for that hammerhead, as you can see, it kind of juts out six to eight feet, where they would each have a turn lane. We're in discussions with them where we're going to make some changes with the front portion of that, and the city council, of course, is, we've been in contact with our own city council here. In particular, we're, two options that we've discussed was combining the two garages on the single-family townhomes, so there'd be only two openings on the Montrose Road, and also increasing the size of the driveways, where it would take away a little bit of the green space, but it would increase that turning width, where they can turn around and go forward out of Montrose Road. Secondly, we've also discussed a possibility of maybe a half-moon-shaped type of entrance, where they would come in and all three driveways would be an offshoot of the half-moon type of effect, where there'd be an in-and-out, a common kind of laneway, where the driveways would offshoot from that.
Okay, so that would be the common driveway access to the dwelling units that they speak of in the letter.
Yes, yes.
That's definitely on the table, because I noted that one of Mr. Delmundo's concerns was the driveway and parking as well. And, you know, that to me seems to be the major problem with this. I realize it was a single-family property before, but, you know, with intensification, we're going to see a lot more of this sort of thing, and I'm glad to hear it's high-end and it will be sold instead of rented.
Councillor, any other questions from members of council? Are those present in the gallery that wish to make more points of clarification?
I have a question.
Do you want to come forward, please? I can't hear you. Just again, for the benefit of the record, your name, please.
Liz Mallett. I live on 7659 Alpine Drive.
Yes.
Why wouldn't you put up a bigger fence and a chain link that he has right now? He's really concerned about his privacy in the back, and we are too, because those people are going to be looking right into our backyards, because they've taken all the trees down to the other development, which are the bungalows that I back onto.
Are you on Alpine Drive, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Just to see if we can answer that question. Is there anything else?
I'm right here.
Yeah, if that's a problem, I mean, I would see no problem in putting up an eight-foot fence to block that, but if I can just add, the zoning, had we put up an art duplex, we could have essentially put up two 2,000-square-foot homes, semis, and the building wouldn't be any bigger than what we're proposing now. I think the height of the building's only 28 feet. So again, even in a single-family home, if a single-family home had been there, it's the same effect. We're not going any higher. We're not going any higher, so, you know, we're not, and from a privacy issue, it's a regular backyard, so I, hopefully, I've addressed that. Now, secondly, the lady here said that she's somewhere in this neighborhood, like five or six homes down. We can't help her with that, that's not our development. The only two that would really be affected, or if they had an issue with privacy, would be only the first two homes on the street.
We understand that. It's good.
That's the side yard. His backyard.
It's, it would be the side yard of our property, which typically may only have one or two windows anyway, so it's actually, it's the buildings there. It's like the side yard of a home, it's not the backyard, the backyards are going to be on the, yeah, the north-south, the west, the west side.
Yes. Counselor Peter Angelo?
Hey, Your Worship, I just wanted to mention that I don't perceive any of the changes here to be of, I guess, major variances to the existing zoning that's in place. I mean, the zoning that's in place right now on the property is R2. I've heard a couple times from the residents that it's single-family, but it isn't single-family. It's actually an R2, which is semi-detached, and that means that Mr. Manella and Mr. Manella can build two homes on the property, and right now, they can cover forty percent of the property, and they're only asking to cover forty-three percent of the property. Under the current zoning, they have to leave six-foot side yards, and they're asking to leave six-foot side yards. And the only difference I really see here is that they're asking to put in three smaller units instead of two larger units, and quite frankly, I mean, there's a market out there for people that don't want to have a big house, and they just want a smaller house, so I don't really see them to be major changes.
Thank you. Okay? Thank you very much. Any other questions? Yes, sir, please.
Anyone, Mr. Manella?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I live exactly here. How can you assure me that I will not be getting these problems later when you put up a townhouse?
Please.
These, these are single-family dwellings, so much like your family that's in the house right now, that's who we're selling these units to. We're not going to rent the unit, so the market is, like I said before, in a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar range, so the people that are going to be purchasing that property, of course, you would think are more than capable of carrying a value with that sort of mortgage, and quite, are probably very good contributors of society. We're not, we're more of a middle-end area, I would say, we're not, we're not at a low-end level. So I wouldn't be, I don't see the concern for potential problems. If there's potential problems, it would, it would be similar to what you have now on the street, because the value of the property is comparable with what the homes are in that area.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
With my, with my property, I don't have any problem with, with safety, you know, on the Montrose Road. I don't have that, because my driveway is here. I come out, I come and in through Alpine.
Excuse me, sir.
I don't come and in through Montrose.
Mr. Del Mondo, yes, you're addressing the council, and you're just talking about getting access from Alpine onto Montrose Road? Is that your concern?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So you're saying you live on the corner of Alpine, just south of the project? Is that correct, in this corner?
Yeah, yes.
Okay. So you're concerned about turning into the traffic, is that you're worried about?
Yeah, because the driveway is at Montrose.
Yes, we understand. Okay. Well, again, they're dealing with that with the region as well, so hopefully, we'll have an answer for you in that regard. And they're going to put in the driveway that allows them to back out, back into a slot and drive out with their facing traffic, rather than backing into the road?
Okay, now, one more thing about the, about the privacy. If you built it right, right next to me, I'd be seeing the townhouse right where my property is.
It's no different than a single-family home or a semi.
Yes. Well, Mr. Del Mondo, we, the planner did describe that we're having the regular setback, the side yard setback is there, so if they build a semi-detached, which they can build now, it would be the same depth from your backyard?
Counsel, we're willing to put a wooden fence if.
Yeah, and I think we've heard that already, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're going to make it as nice as we can, it's not going to be, you know, it's going to be a nice property.
And we'll see if we can deal with that.
Perhaps, Your Worship, that can be something that's addressed at the second.
Yes, it can be, and we can make a motion that that affects as well, members, so. Okay, so we'll try to address that concern, Mr. Del Mondo.
A concrete, concrete fence?
No. No. Niagara Falls, not Europe.
Okay, yeah. Let's move on, if we can, to any other questions you didn't bring forward, Mr. Del Mondo?
You told me that you're just gonna sell it, not rent.
It's not for rent. Each one's sold individually.
What, what, if somebody bought it and then had it rented later?
Someone can buy the house next door to you and rent it too.
Mr. Del Mondo, this isn't a debate, okay? So let's, if you have that point, you'd like to make that question, if that's a question formally, if there's anything else, please state what they are, and we'll try to get them answered for you.
Because there is a big difference between somebody owning and somebody renting.
Yes. They're being offered for sale, as you heard the applicant say?
So am I to understand that you're just gonna sell it and not rent?
That's right, yes.
You can assure me of that?
Yes, that's, that's right, that is correct.
Because we want neighbors who buy, not rent.
Mr. Del Mondo? Okay, gentlemen, I think we've answered the question. Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to conclude the meeting, okay? So we're going to ask the council for the pleasure of their motion at this point. Counselor Peter Angelo? Okay, we have a motion to move the recommendation, seconded by Counsel Iannone. Yes, Counsel Carriola?
Include the neighbors in the site plan process?
Okay, that's going to happen. Okay? Is that okay with the mover and seconder? Fine. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you, Mr. Del Mondo. Move on to the next item on the agenda, some unfinished business. We have CPS two zero zero eight dash oh six, the Garner Southwest Grassy Brook service areas. We have a recommendation from staff that the interim funding of the Garner Road Southwest Grassy Brook sanitary service areas, projects continue from reserve funds until development charge revenues have been received for these projects. The pleasure, yes, Counselor, moved by Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Nadadi. Yes, Counsel Iannone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Here, Counsel Thompson entitled these as the Iannone paper, so I think I'll start the discussion off. Staff wrote a recommendation, there are two signatures at the back, Mr. McDonald's and, I can't tell who signed it, for Mr. Burden, but I'd like them to walk us through this, this report, because I absolutely have a crisis of confidence in the information provided to me in this report, so I'd like to hear what staff has to say about it, and then I'd like to speak to it.
Mr. McDonald?
I mean, the report is pretty self-explanatory, I'm not sure if there's a specific area of questioning. The report is a result of a recommendation actually made by Counsel Carriola, I think it was Counsel Carriola, relative to making efforts not to debenture these projects. What the report does is explain a little bit about the process in terms of how we deal with internal financing, short-term financing of projects of this nature. We'll do that a little bit, it talks about the, a little bit about the four-of-seven bylaw and how it works, but in fact, the next report from the legal department answers that question more directly, the question about whether or not the four-of-seven bylaw was used appropriately or not, and so we'll deal with that in the next report. This talks a little bit about the fact that these projects were included in the development charges bylaw, the last bylaw, the oh-four bylaw, and it talked a little bit about the fact that the estimate for these projects was actually approximately one point five million, and as we all know, projects all said and done, didn't cost one point five million, but closer to fifteen million, and it explains why, in fact, the prices were increased to the point of work. And it talks about the study that was done to give that kind of detail in explaining the change in the prices. So it goes into that sort of thing. It also points out, and I think the important thing here is making the point that throughout the council involvement with these reports, it was pointed out that these projects would be paid for by development charges. The report reemphasizes the fact that these projects will still be paid for by development charges, and points out that this, in fact, the cost for this project, because it will service an area that will go obviously beyond the oh-four bylaw, that these projects will again be included in the oh-nine bylaw, the development charges bylaw, and funds will continue to be collected to pay for this over the next several years. The, we pointed out the changes in terms of, with the development charges account, while we planned on paying for them as we would normally any other project, the fact is, near the end of oh-seven, it was determined that there wasn't enough funds currently in the development charges account to pay for it directly, so we've basically been funding them internally, short-term financing, by using reserves, by using our line of credit and our own cash flow. The capital projects, what we call the capital budget, the attachment sheets for the capital budget, by the time they were submitted quietly in the budget, staff were aware that, in fact, there wasn't enough money to pay the development charges immediately, so there was a reference made to debenturing these projects, and I think that's where the discussion took place in council. And that was the first time, really, that council realized that these projects wouldn't be paid directly immediately through development charges, and debenturing was a possibility, recognizing that council decides that whether or not they would be debentured or not, and that's how the discussion ensued. So this report basically was through a bit of a history of that, but then has reviewed the funding, and in fact, staff is suggesting that we continue funding these projects through the reserve funds that we have, and that those accounts would be repaid as development charges comes in. So it's a, we're recommending, as council has asked, that we not debenture them, that in fact, we continue paying the cost of short-term financing, and that short-term financing would come mostly from our current reserves, which would be replenished as development charges comes in with interest. So that's, in essence, what the report says.
Yes, Counsel?
Okay, now I can make clear my points. I think when you're in politics, you have to pick your battles, seriously. I mean, you could fight over everything in this council chamber. You know, I often leave, bite in my tongue and going home, because you have to work on a majority of council. This is a battle I'm not giving up. Mr. McDonald just explained something that hasn't been proven to this council, which shocks the heck out of me. This whole thing started because of our, because of two projects in our budget binder that said we would debenture these projects to be collected if development charges actually Because of a call to, and I, and this whole conversation overall around Mr. McDonald and Mr. Burden, so the rest of the senior staff wasn't signing a letter or anything like that, this is what this, this is where this is circling around. The thing that I took, I won't say offense to, was the fact that I asked a budget question on a telephone. The answer given to me the night in council in regards to the two applications before us and the two reports before us were contrary to the discussion that I had on the telephone. And my problem was, we're handed a budget binder, well, and I'll use the capital budget binder, we're given a capital budget binder with two reports that I found problematic. And when I asked an opinion, which I believe was the truth, on the telephone, I disagreed with the answer given to me in open council, because it wasn't consistent with the answer given to me on the telephone. It's public money, I think the public needs to know what we're doing with their public money, even more so, I think this council needs to vote, knowing what they have to do with the public money. I'm not new here, I won't say the amount of days, because I obviously won't have it right, and that'll be the focus of Cory's article, but I think I've been here long enough, and staff that's sitting here has been here long enough to know, all I'm asking for is all the information. I mean, I'm banging my head against a wall here, but quite frankly, I think I knocked on enough thousands of doors, and I said to people, "I will represent you," didn't make a promise, I just said I'd come here and do my best. I don't, I think the reason I'm having a hard time with doing my best is because I'm working with half the information I need to make a decision. We've had an in-camera meeting on this, Janice and I have sat, had three separate meetings with senior staff on this, and I'll tell you that it has been a really difficult thing. I don't like being mean or confrontational with our staff, particularly those I trusted and respected before this. And we sat with a meeting last Thursday with three members of senior staff, and I think at the end, all I learned was that it's clear that those sitting in the room with us thought Janice and I understood very little, because the mantra of the meeting was, "You just don't understand." And I mean, the question was asked to Counsel Ring and myself more times than we can count, maybe you just misunderstood, you think maybe you misunderstood? We're not idiots. I think we get elected because the public likes the fact that we ask the difficult questions, that they're screaming at the television, and the difficult question is this. Those taglines in that capital budget were put there because we are over ten million dollars short in development charges. Of this, it's been confirmed in camera with council, in this council chamber with council, and in two meetings with senior staff, Counsel Ring and I had. So what I don't understand is, and these are clearly things I can admit to staff, I don't understand, that how back in the late oh-seven, staff realized that we are over ten million dollars short in our development charges, and council wasn't informed. Not only were we not informed at the time that the budget binder was given to us, and they knew they were ten million, over ten million dollars short in development charges, that unless we had pushed this point, we still, to this point, don't know where that ten million dollars went. How are we short all those millions of dollars in development charges? And I don't understand where they went, why we were short of them, whether it was because one of three things. Did we overspend on projects, and if we did, did this council give approval every time we overspent? Did the development charges not materialize, as staff had told council they anticipated they would? If so, I have a serious problem passing these two documents counting on money we're hoping will materialize with development charges, because we've already got a history of showing we're short. Or did the money just get spent, and nobody can account for them? Because to date, and I'm going to make a motion to ask, and I don't need Mr. McDonald jumping up, I'm going to ask for a motion that staff bring back the report accounting to where that, those millions, and it's over ten million dollars, as confirmed in this council chamber, where those monies went. We were told in open council that the money had been borrowed in our interim borrowing bylaw. Mr. Burden stood up on a direct question from me. I'm sorry, Dean, did I, pardon?
Continue.
Okay. Asked Mr. Burden in front of this council, standing there, did we, in fact, borrow the money for these projects? Mr. Burden's answer to this council in open council, with the media sitting there, yes, we did, in our interim borrowing bylaw. Just so that council's clear, I even saw the borrowing documents. Mr. Burden pulled them out of his cupboard in his, in the outside of his office, and walked me through the borrowing documents. So I'm unclear now how we didn't borrow them, because in camera, we were told we borrowed them, interim borrowing bylaw. We have two reports here that are contrary to each other on where that money came from.
Just to that point of, there's.
No, I'm not done. And he can, please, let him speak when I'm finished, he's taking notes, he can answer them when I'm done.
You want the questions answered, don't worry.
Please. They're telling us that the money came out of reserves. Counselor Ring and I have gone through this budget binder until we're blue in the face and can't find where it came from reserves. If it came from reserves, which ones? We were told that in our private meeting with Mr. Burden, that we, our reserves are allocated. I went through this budget binder again, and both those projects in that budget binder are being underfunding and reserve funding sources, under debentures, nowhere does it say reserves. So I'm unclear, Mr. Mayor, if we're being told that we're going to continue funding them from the reserves, what reserves we funded them from? Because I would have never voted for a project to be funded from reserves after paying the IBI consultant to come to us three times now and tell us we need to leave our reserves alone, that we need to save money. Council's going in the wrong direction. So, A, we didn't know we were short, and B, we're really still not clear where that funding came from, because, I mean, I learned how to read a budget binder from Mr. Burden, and he walked me through those borrowing documents, so I'm hardly an idiot, I understood them. So maybe all the council needs to take a look at the same borrowing documents that he showed. he showed me, because I'm pretty clear we borrowed that money. I don't understand on how I can ask a question on a telephone in regards to public money and in our meeting on Thursday be told by our CAO that the answer given to me on the telephone was the personal opinion of our CAO. I don't call her, I mean, of our chief finance officer. I don't call our chief financial officer for personal questions or personal answers. I call him because I trust him to tell me the facts in regards to a budget because he's the only person I can pick up the phone and call. If he gives me opinion on the phone, I have to count on it being honest and I have to count on it being a professional opinion. There's no personal opinions given to me on a telephone. And quite frankly, I think we're elected to protect public money. This is a battle that the two of us should not be waging. All we did was ask for answers. What I did learn on Thursday, which councillor Wing and I have had time to speak on this since we left that meeting, because quite frankly, you don't like to leave a meeting upsetting other people, and you don't feel good about it. So anybody who thinks that our purpose here is to hunt bureaucrats, as Corey highlighted that, you know, councillor Puttig has a, has a habit of doing, I mean, this is altruistic, Mr. Mayor. I really think that we weren't given the answers, really. I, I, I don't know how much we can say to council, please do the same homework that we're doing, because we're providing you the answers to the homework that we've done, and we really need you to pay attention. We were told in the meeting with the three senior staff members, and I asked a direct question, why would the, the, what I said was, these were the answers given to me on the phone. I wrote them all down at the time. The answer was, yes, those may have been the answers I gave councillor Iononi on the phone, but in open council, I would never repeat those answers, because it cannot appear that senior staff members are not talking with one voice, that we disagree with each other. We cannot be deemed, and the word was, to be debating each other in open council. And councillor Wing threw out a phrase I'd never heard, "Group thought." So what, we're working with group, oh, group think? We're working with group think? I don't know how many times I've asked this open council, please tell me all of the, all of the information, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent, whether it's negative or positive, I can't make an informed decision. I quite frankly, honest to God, do not believe that this council made an informed decision when they voted on that budget, because we didn't have the same information that we have now. I want to understand how, there's a borrowing document here, I want to understand how Mr. McDonald told this council in camera that staff walks a fine line on the answers it gives us on the telephone and in open council, and how we can say to the residents, we're really representing you and we're really getting to the bottom of this, if when we do ask the difficult questions, and there's a time for that in politics, it doesn't appear we're picking on senior staff? Because quite frankly, it's really getting challenging to do our job, Mr. Mayor, when we have such a severe crisis of confidence in the information given to us. And just to close out to council, I think the most disturbing thing when we left that meeting was when we were told, "We better be very careful on what we say in this council chamber tonight." That's a direct quote, councillor Wing was sitting right there. And not identify the people that we're talking about. Well, our answer was, "These are public reports. There are two signatures on these public reports. They're not in-camera items, this whole issue isn't an in-camera item, maybe how we deal with personnel's in-camera, but getting to the point is a public issue on public money." I then made the comment that, "I'm really clear on the line I walk on privacy and information and what I can and cannot cross," because I spoke to a lawyer, and the answer given to me was, "So have we. We've consulted a lawyer and know what you can do also." So I think the first question I want answered, because I took that as a subtle threat, you know, don't make waves, don't cause trouble, don't look like a pain in the butt, because clearly that's what all these questions are perceived to be. I want to know, Mr. Mayor, do we, if our senior staff consulted a lawyer in regards to what councillor Wing and I can say tonight, did they consult a lawyer and pay them with public money? Did council authorize staff to go consult a lawyer to fight council, who's asking questions in what we believe to be the public's best interest? Because quite frankly, that to me, I already knew the rest of the questions weren't going to get answered. That would make me happy. But that final, "You better be really careful on what you say in council," really is what tipped me over the edge. We need answers to all those questions. And I'm going to make a motion in regards to the missing or short millions of dollars. I think we owe the public that. And quite frankly, I think every one of us who ever ran on open transparency and accountability can burn our flyers and change our websites if we're not actually going to get to the bottom of this.
Well, Ms. McDonald, you have a number of questions to respond to.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's difficult to focus in on the questions as opposed to just the dialogue and the comments. And, you know, the problem here is that-
Please.
-that the whole council doesn't sit on these meetings and doesn't have 100% recall of what happened at council in the minutes of the meetings, because much of this is extremely out of context. It's very much out of context, and it's really an unfair presentation that you're hearing. But I'll do my best to respond to some of the key areas. But, but I'm confident that I will not resolve the problem, and as councillor Iononi just said, she knew going into the meeting last week it wouldn't get anywhere, because she had told me in the meeting that she had met with councillor Wing, and they knew they had decided before they went in because of their discussion, they weren't going to get anywhere. So it's really difficult to have a meeting like that, if that's the start. I want to go backwards a little bit and say that I did make the point very clearly in the meeting we had last week, be very careful what you say when it comes to individuals and personnel. And if you have anything to say dealing with personnel, you should go in camera. That's what I said. It wasn't to give the impression that you can't say, councillors can say what they wish, and I talked about personnel only, and I've said that in open council before and I said it in committee. So it's taken extremely far out of context. Staff walk a fine line in terms of answers. That ties into the other point that was made, that councillor Iononi's made this reference several times, that on the telephone, she's received an answer, and then in open council asks the same questions and get a different answer. I would suggest she did, she got the same answer on the phone as she got in open council. What she got is different words and different adjectives explaining that. And we've talked about this in open council, and I'll mention it again. Councillor Iononi asked the question about, to our executive director of corporate services about the budget, and he expressed on the telephone his concern about the budget. This was before the budget was completed, and he was expressing some real concerns and, and I guess used certain terminology to express his concern. When asked the question in open council, he used different terminologies. And I think all of the council here would agree, because we all have private conversations, and we might be more expressive and more animated on a private conversation than we would in open council. But the fact is, if you go back and look at the tape, which I've done on several occasions, the staff person, in fact, expressed concerns about the budget. Concerns about the growth in the debt because of major projects we've taken on, concerns about the fact that the more debt we take on, the less flexibility we have with other projects, concerns about the increase on the levy. Those, all of those points were made by that same person. And the same words were not used, but the answer was the same, and I'm convinced of that. The, so it wasn't a personal opinion per se, even though we talked about personal opinion, it was really the tone and the manner in which it was done. And I guess certain staff members feel that when they talk to certain councillors or talk to any individuals on the phone on one-to-one, you can use certain language that maybe wouldn't be appropriate in open council. And the fact is, is that the questions that are asked again tonight, and I'm getting to the questions, the suggestion is that there's no answers. There have been answers for every single one of these questions, and the problem is, if a person will not accept the answer you're giving, and then they throw it back as if they're not getting the answers. They're getting the answer, they're not buying the answer. They're not buying the facts, in fact, around these issues. So it's very difficult to resolve it. And I agree with councillor Iononi, this is a battle that shouldn't have to be fought. There's no battle here. This is extremely transparent, and the information is very clear. The issue around $10 million missing, if that's what I heard, is a ridiculous statement, because there is absolutely no money missing whatsoever, and at any point, we can provide, in fact, an account of the particular development charges account, and we can show where those monies have been distributed. That's a non-issue. Go back to the questions, and the first question is relative to the development charges and why were we short on development charges? And this is a unique situation, it's a bit of anomaly. The reason we're short is because, for two reasons really, and they were kind of alluded to a little bit. One is that, as you know, we've been doing many more capital projects over the last couple of years than we've done in the 10 years past, and so therefore, we've been doing way more work and using development charges more frequently than we have in the past. So that depletes the account. At the same time, we hadn't collected, sorry, I'm just a bit distracted.
Yeah, excuse me, please. One conversation? Go ahead.
The, so the fact is, is that we've spent a lot more money on projects, all that were eligible for development charges, and we can show you that. So money isn't missing. So when we got to these particular projects, it's after we've gone through this many projects, and then we finally got to these two, which happen to be large ones, there wasn't enough money there to pay for those projects off. As of today, or the last time we checked, we had 10, $11 million left in development charges. So there's money in development charges that wasn't enough to pay for these projects. So I think that's important to point out. The question that's come up several times is, if you knew that the development charges account was lower than you had anticipated initially, why didn't you tell council? And that's a very good question, and a question's been answered on several occasions. It wasn't determined that, in fact, that particular account was down at the level it is until the end of '07. By then, these projects are well on the way, contracts were awarded, and we were into that. That was about the time we were finalizing the capital budget. And the finance department made reference in the capital budget sheet on these projects that previously had been identified for to be financed through development charges, there was a reference made to debenturing. The assumption by staff, when I spoke to them about that, was they assumed that when we present the capital budget, we will be discussing the funding sources for those projects. And at that point, we'd be talking about debenturing versus development charges versus whatever sources of funding. And so I don't remember the exact date when you received the binder, but it wasn't that long after it was really determined. And I'll just point out one of the problems here. The, most of the projects that require development charges funding, or any funding, I guess, are in public works. That's our largest infrastructure area. It's important that there's close communication between municipal works and finance relative to the funding. And the fact is, the communication hasn't been as strong as it should be, and there's never been a problem with it. With these projects and a number of projects we've been doing, public works assume that funds were in the account, move forward, and that's where the reports were generated from. And it's only because of review and actually more diligent work on behalf of finance, they determined it wasn't, and since then, there's been a new process implemented to really ensure that that sort of thing doesn't happen again. The other issue is regarding the reserves. And again, I don't want to jump into the other report here, but the, we've been paying these from reserves, and we're not suggesting, all reserves, as you know, and councillor Iononi just pointed out, they are dedicated to certain projects. But what happens is, they're sitting in the bank, okay? So what happens is, if we need money at any one time because our cash flow is down, we're waiting for taxes, or we're waiting for whatever, we go to those reserves and we borrow from the reserves. And to be honest, it doesn't matter what reserves we borrow from. We borrow from them. We have an accounting system that allows us to do that, and then when we get money back or we need those reserves, we put it back. We're constantly moving monies from one project to another internally. It doesn't change anything at all in the sense of that money is dedicated to those projects, and in the end, they'll be used for that project. And the simplest example I can give you is, and I mentioned this at a previous council meeting, we have a significant amount of money in reserves right now. And when I asked our finance director today, what was it?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine million dollars right now in reserves. And it varies. That's very high for us. The reason we have so much money in reserves is because, to a great degree, it's due to a lot of issues, but the biggest one is the convention center. Because we have received in advance $35 million to go towards paying for that convention center. So that money is sitting in the bank. So what happens is, we borrow from it. We borrow from whatever source we can to stop us from going to the bank. What happens is, when the money is needed, it goes back into that, and we owe it interest. We pay it interest to the level of interest that we would pay at a bank. So if suddenly we were paying today the convention center, we put it back in. If we were short, we might take money from another reserve. There's an accounting system that allocates all of this, or we might go to our line of credit or whatever. It's how municipal finance works. It's not the kind of detail we often get into in discussions here, but the treasurer has the authority to borrow from these reserves as long as they're paid back. And of course, they have to be paid back, and they're paid back with interest. So that's where the money comes from. So we haven't eliminated reserves and projects that were meant to be paid for by reserves, we simply are borrowing from these reserves. So that's, that's where the money comes from. The, on these particular projects, we've been paying for them through our cash flows, through reserves, through line of credits, and any monies we have within our resources. What we have not done is we have not debentured, okay? Now, and maybe I'll lead in a little bit to the point because it's kind of touched on. We borrow, we pass a 407 bylaw annually, and the 407 bylaw gives us permission to borrow money to help pay any outstanding debt that we have as we operate before we collect all the money that we need to run our operation. The purpose, and that goes into detail in that report, the purpose of that bylaw is to handle our ongoing business. We do not identify in that bylaw exactly what projects we're paying for. And whatever bill's come along, if we don't have money in our own cash account, we'll, we use our line of credit, which is filled from this 407 bylaw. That's how it works. If we were, when council makes a decision, if you made a decision tonight that you don't want to pass the next report, or this report that says finance through reserves, and in fact, you want to debenture, if you decide to debenture this project, or any projects, then the staff would come back and ask you to approve a 405 bylaw. The 405 bylaw really is only passed after you make a decision to debenture a specific project. And again, that's laid out in the report, and I'm sure you've read it. And there's some confusion here, because these are major projects, and normally, if you're going to go with a major project and you would debenture, you'd pass a 405 bylaw, and you would identify exactly what projects they were, as we've done with the community center and other projects in the past. We have not done that because you've made no decision to debenture it. On any one day, we can't, unless we go back and really check every single invoice, we may have paid invoices from those projects as a result of our 405 bylaw. That's quite acceptable, and you're allowed to do that. 407 bylaw, sort, and you're allowed to do that, that's not a problem. But again, at any one day, things change. Maybe at, you know, nine o'clock in the morning, if those invoices have come along to be paid, they would have been paid out of our cash account. And by 4:30 in the afternoon, the cash may have been depleted, and it might have come out of our line of credit. So we could flip the projects and it would never have happened. So it's just the way it works day to day. And you can see in the other report, because you asked for a legal opinion on it, what goes on in that regard is quite legitimate, it happens in all municipalities, and it's a non-issue. So, and we'll get into that in a minute. So the point I'm making here is, to paint the picture here, that in fact, there's $10 million missing is just a real stretch of what the facts are. There's no money missing whatsoever. The fact is, these projects cost much more than we anticipated initially several years ago, and it was based on solid information at the time. Several years later, we determined they were going to cost a lot more, and we had consultants report to identify why they were, and they cost more. They've been being, they have been funded up to date from internal financing, short-term financing, that's a fact. They will, all of that money, every bit of that money, the cost of those projects will ultimately be paid for through development charges. I'm not sure exactly how much time that will take. We've had projects that have taken five, six, seven years to pay back in development charges in the past, but they will be paid. So if we borrow from a particular reserve or a line of- So if we borrow from a particular reserve, or a line of credit, it'll be paid back through development charges with interest. So that's exactly how these projects will be worked. So the only, the heart of the real problem here, the heart of the real problem is, staff anticipated that when these projects would be completed, there'd be enough money in the development charges account to pay for them, as they were completed. And the fact is, there isn't enough money currently to pay for those projects right now. So we'll borrow the money, and we'll pay it back in development charges when they come in. So in the end, it costs no more money to the taxpayers to do it this way. It just takes a bit longer, and unfortunately, it ties up the cash flows as we're moving through it. It's unfortunate. We haven't run into that problem before. Hopefully, we'll not run into it again, and we've taken measures to be more diligent to be on top of that. So hopefully, I've answered the questions.
Question with regard to legal counsel?
Oh, to legal counsel. City of Niagara Falls has paid absolutely nothing for any senior staff member to get personal legal advice.
Okay, thank you. I have Councila Wing, next.
Thank you. I have concerns with the completeness and accuracy of the information before us when we're making certain decisions, and it really revolves around budgetary decisions. If staff realized in the fall of 2007 that there wasn't sufficient money in the development charges reserve, we were going into budget discussions then. We should have been aware. Staff knew several weeks, couple months, I don't know how long ago, that we'd lost a $2 million transit contract. That's money that we count on coming in this year, and next year, the following year. And here we are, making capital spending decisions, assuming that we're going to have $2 million more per year coming in than we do. We will, you know? Like, this is something we should have been made aware of, and I don't officially know this, but we know it. I have a problem voting on a recommendation that the interim funding for these projects continues from reserve funds, when this is totally contradictory to what Mr. Burden told Elder Councilaiononi in our April 18 meeting. He told us then about a $6 million revolving term line of credit for working capital not tied to any project. And he also told us that the auditors had said, "No, you cannot charge debt to your reserve funds." And this is, I have my original notes here, and that's a pervading what it said. He said that when the Garner-Southwest and Grassy Brook Sanitary Service Area Project bills came in, to close the account, they needed to draw cash from somewhere, and therefore would need to go to council for approval for long-term borrowing. You can't, he, the auditors had said, "You cannot take this money from your reserve funds." And here we have a recommendation saying, "Continue to fund it from reserve funds." These projects have already expanded, 11.2 million, which the treasurer has paid by using the city's reserve funds as an interim surplus of funds. That's not what we heard from Mr. Burden, that's not what we heard from Mr. McDonald at the in-camera discussion a few weeks ago. I have problems, too, with the inconsistency between this report and the next one, where it talks about what a section 407, the borrowing, annual borrowing bylaw, is for. In this report, it says it's for operating expenditures. In the next report, it says it's for current expenditures. Now, a picture, a Venn diagram with the overlapping circles, and there's operating expenditures, and there's current expenditures, and yeah, there's a lot of overlap, but they're two separate distinct things, and I think we kind of need to decide which it is that the borrowing bylaws intended to cover. I have a problem with a professional opinion changing from one venue to another. And from what Councilaiononi's described, it wasn't just the tone that changed, but the actual substance of what was said to her. To me, that's a problem, you know? It's a professional opinion, and it should be the same in one venue as it is in another. I have concerns with the ability of our treasurer to fulfill his duties under the municipal act. Unfortunately, we have a copy of that in our, in our report here, and it says, "That includes providing the council with such information with respect to the financial affairs of the municipality as it requires or requests." As it requires. If we don't have money in our development charges reserve, don't you think we should know that? Don't we think we require that kind of information at budget time? If we've lost a $2 million transit contract, don't you think we require that information in a timely manner, especially if we're still in budget discussions? You know, it's that sort of thing. And I know Mr. Iarfida took great exception to my use of the word groupthink, but I've checked it all the time since then, and there's, you know, when I punched in groupthink definition, there's a number of things that came up that I went, "Yep, yep, yep, yep." You know? That's what I'm getting at when I say there's a problem with our corporate culture. And I think that is the underpinning of this whole thing, is the problem lies with the corporate culture. I'm not sure how to fix it, because we keep being tasked, "How do we fix it?" But that, I think, is the basis of the it.
Mr. McDonald, you wanted to speak again?
Just on the one point that has come up a couple of times. Again, we found out the end of '07 that there was a problem in development charges, that it didn't have the level we had hoped for. It was identified in your budget sheets with the intent that it would be discussed as part of budget discussions. It was a matter of a couple of months, sort of, within that point of view. And again, the ultimate decision for debenturing is with council, and council, as at this point, hasn't made that decision. You know, and again, like I said, we're not going to, people have certain feelings and perceptions of this, you know, operating in current budget, I mean, I tend to think of them as pretty similar, but, you know, as opposed to our debenturing budget, and we talked about that, we're not going to agree on those points. But I would suggest to you that the report you have in front of you is a factual report, and the recommendation is to continue funding those projects a certain way. Either you accept the recommendation, or make another recommendation to debenture them. So we're leaving that up to council. I'm not sure what's served here by continuing to go back over months and months and months of documents you don't have in front of you, where, as I said, there's clearly different perceptions of what happened and what was said, and we've answered the questions on many, many occasions, and we can't change the facts of those situations or those discussions. So I would ask council to consider the report and the recommendations.
Councila Wing and Councilaiononi.
I'm only speaking to the documents that are in front of me tonight, which are these two reports. And I forgot to note that at the end of the second report, it talks about section 405 of the Act relating to temporary borrowing to meet expenditures made in connection with the work to be financed in whole or in part by the issue of debentures. Now, at that point, when we passed the 407, the interim borrowing bylaw, in which monies were borrowed for these two projects, staff's intention was that these monies were to, these projects were to be financed in whole or in part by the issuing of debentures. If the auditors had told Mr. Burden that we could not charge debt to reserve funds, what I want to know is how we've done that? How can we, how have we managed to charge these projects to reserve funds if the auditors had said, "No, you can't do it"? Because I wrote that down, Mr., we met with Mr. Burden on April 18. The auditor said, "No, you cannot charge debt to reserve funds." So how on earth have we done it?
All I can just say is that Mr. Beaman will respond in the next report, in the 405 report, and as we mentioned, the 407 bylaw is meant to pay the debt of the corporation. There was no decision at that time, there still is no decision to debenture those projects, so their current debt that we have.
Okay, thank you. Councilaiononi, I'm sorry, Councila Wing, you still have the floor.
Yes, I was going to ask if Mr. Burden could perhaps explain, when the auditors said you cannot charge us to reserve funds, how it was done?
Mr. Burden?
Through the chair, the discussion with the auditor was in respect to whether or not we could actually run the development charge balance into a deficit. In other words, we would show it owing in order to fund a project. We would show the development charges in a negative position. That's similar to saying, "We charge, we are charging debt to the development charges" in the sense that the development charges are owing the general purposes fund now. And that was the point that I was trying to express, that the auditors said, "No, you cannot have your development charges showing a deficit. You can run them down to zero, but you cannot run them into the red." Just as another point, the $6 million reference, in January, when we passed the 407 temporary borrowing bylaw, that was for $24 million. We then, as normally, we go to the bank, and we ask for different facilities of short-term borrowings. One is, what we commonly use is the line of credit, that's a $15 million. In addition to that, we have an additional $6 million. It's a stock gap, which we can use for capital projects. We actually don't use it, but it's there in case we do need to access those funds. We also have a facility for our business card, and there is also a facility there for our CIP lendings to people who are borrowing monies from the city.
Okay. Councilaiononi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councila Wing's correct. I mean, we sat for almost two hours with Mr. Burden on April 18, and quite frankly, Mr. McDonald's whole summary there of our concerns absolutely are not in accordance to the information given to us on April 18. We wrote him down verbatim when we sat with senior staff last Thursday, under direction of this council, who said, "See if you can go work it out." At the end, which was a very uncomfortable meeting, and we felt, and I had told Councila Diodati the same tale before, there's no way that anything positive can come out of this. And my point in the meeting, which, you know, you tap dance around, you try to get your spin out there, which we just watched, my point in the meeting was, if I contend that a member of senior staff lied to me, and that was the word I used in that meeting, and Mr. McDonald, as he explained in our in-camera, said that didn't happen, then you're bringing somebody in who either has to say, "Yes, I lied to one person," or "Yes, I lied to the other." And I said, "There could be nothing good come of that." I didn't like the format any more than anybody else in that room did. I thought the whole thing was uncomfortable. I didn't, this is not fun for us. But we're telling you that the answers and the spin given tonight are contrary to the answers given to two of your members of council in every direction you've given us to do, and that is sit and talk about it. And that's what we've done. And I will tell you what you don't have as of today. You have no documentation, not, nobody in this room has any documentation telling us that those two projects we're running over. We had no documentation telling us. And I'm not saying the money's missing. The wording given to me and to Janice in that meeting was, "We were woefully short," and Mr. Harrison and Mr. Burden were very dismayed on how short they were in the development charges. I count on his opinion. So if he is very dismayed, I want to know. I want him to stand in this council chamber, I want him to tell us in a budget deliberation, "I am very dismayed that we are..." And he told Councila Wing and I, "Over $10 million short on development charges." I didn't say the money's missing, I didn't, I said, "If you're short a projected amount, we're not talking 10, 20, $100,000, we're talking over $10 million." Quite frankly, is there a trigger line that council has to be told? Because if $10 million isn't it, maybe we need to set one now. The difference is how staff wants to be perceived on the information they gave us, which is so inadequate. I've stood in this council chamber and told council 10 times, you can't, they can't show us the information because it doesn't exist. We were never told. How many times have we said, "Tell us everything"? If my arguing over $10 million is obnoxious to Mr. McDonald, well, you know what? I don't answer to him. I answer to the thousands of people that voted for me, and you know what? I don't think they have the answer yet, anyway. So I'd like to make a motion, that staff bring back reports.
We do have a motion on the floor right now?
I'm sorry, what was it?
We have a motion to move the recommendation, moved by Councila Peter Angelo, seconded by Councila Diodati.
Then I'll make my motion after that. My discussion in Mr. Burden's office with Mr. Burden and I revolved around how council should have been told in the 405, 407, the numbers are screwed up in my head now. The interim borrowing bylaw we passed. He highlighted the point that we had used the interim borrowing bylaw that talked about funding capital, and he used the example that we used it for the arena. And I say, "Great, that was open and transparent to the public, and it was open and transparent to council on what we were voting for. But if you hand me an interim borrowing bylaw that has historically, long before your time, Mr. Mayor, through Councila Thompson's time, was to run the operation of the business, salaries, gas, trucks, maintenance, that type of thing, didn't, I, nobody ever told me it was a capital project, and we've had the conversation, they weren't capital projects, it was to run the business of the city." The interim borrowing bylaw that I believe we should have used, and I think we voted contrary to our own bylaw, would have said to council, by the way, newsflash, we're woefully short, we need to now put that money in the interim borrowing bylaw, and when I asked in the office, "Has anybody here ever seen a borrowing document that the city has put together?" The reason I was shown was, Mr. Burden tried to make the point to me, "It was in your interim borrowing bylaw, look it. It says these two projects, it was a borrowing document, I followed it, it was in that interim borrowing bylaw." And the bottom line that we're asking is, we should have known. We're not clairvoyant, we can't guess, the residents don't know, they count on us, which we look like morons most of the time, when we stand here and say, "I didn't know." Ignorance isn't an excuse for any of the nine of us, and if we don't ask the questions, we don't get the answers. I don't want to knock on anybody's door in 2010 and say, "I'm sorry, I didn't ask, I'm sorry, I didn't know." Because quite frankly, my opinion is, IBIs told us, Mr. Burden's told us, he stood up in this council, and he told the truth when he said, "We are going in the wrong direction of debt. We borrowed for this project." Saw the documents, people, asked to see them yourself, they exist.
No, we have a motion, yes, Councila Maves?
Just, I'm very pleased with Mr. McDonald's explanation of our borrowing. Obviously, we have to minimize our interest out, maximize our interest in, so obviously, we have to use monies from other areas to spend, for anybody's in business would understand that. And also, Mr. Burden and Mr. Harrison are very good at conducting the funds in a proper manner, I have every confidence in them. And I really think that we have to have these borrowing bylaws, and really, if we're going to stick this close, and want to know exactly what's going on here, this council's going to have to meet daily, because we have to have, these people have to have this leeway to borrow and to rob Peter to pay Paul if we're going to run this city in a proper fashion. I think that's the only way we can do this, and I'm very pleased with the explanation tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councila Thompson?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate all of the work and the efforts that Councila Wing and Aiononi have done on this, and they have certainly spent many hours and gone overtime in their responsibilities here. And I really think that, and I don't know whether this is a report back to council, but, and we've asked this questions, these questions on numerous occasions over the past several weeks, and we get quick responses that, all of a sudden, now I hear that we got $35 million in reserves. I was told a few weeks ago, I said, "You know, what are we doing with our reserves?" "Oh, we got more reserves than we ever had." So what are we doing? We're borrowing from the, from the, how many millions of dollars have you got for the convention center in reserves in the city?
Approximately $35 million. So we borrow from those, and we repay again. So we, remember, we collected two payments from the province, the provincial component of a convention center.
That's a total?
From the province, yeah.
Then we have 14.
Yeah, we have other monies committed. I'm just saying, what we received, we received in advance the full payment from the province for $35 million, so that's sitting in the bank.
No other funds?
We don't have the federal monies yet, they typically come as we produce invoices throughout the project.
FMC.
The FMC money, yes, as well.
Because all of your reserves are earmarked?
Every one of them is earmarked for something, and we borrow from them, and we put them back again. And we put them back with interest, the same interest that we would get if we had that money sitting in the bank.
Well, that disturbs me that we have to, we're in a situation where we have to borrow on the convention center $35 million. So anyway, I would like to know how we got behind with our development charges? If you got to give us a report on that to explain expenditures, where they went out for infrastructure, whatever, and you haven't recouped those yet? I think we have to have an answer to that. I would like to.
Are you suggesting, Councila, you're making a motion, or are you going to?
No, no, I'm just asking a question.
I tried to do that, because there's one of them.
We have, we have on the floor, we can certainly entertain that, but we do have a motion on the floor, so we'd like to address that first, and then we'll have you make your motion subsequent. Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor.
Maybe I'm not clear. You can't vote for a motion.
I just got off twice. I haven't finished that. I haven't finished that. Bang your gavel a couple of times and let's get on with it.
Go ahead and just make your point, please.
Well, what are you interrupting me for? I'm having a conversation.
I'm asking if you're making a motion.
I'm not making a motion. I'm asking questions.
Okay, go ahead.
The development charges, can you tell me why, why we, we don't have any development charges?
What we can do is we can provide a printout basically of the development charges over the last few years, the debts and the credits in that account. And you'll see the projects we can, we can show out here.
Okay, can we, can we have a total printout of the reserve funds and how they're allocated?
Yes.
Okay. And can we determine the, I know we have some information with respect to why those, I, it's difficult to understand how a project can go from 1.5 million to 15 million for two projects.
Yeah, and that's identified in the report, actually.
Well, there's some brief comments, but that's.
Comments in it, but it, I mean, the details are there relative to the problem, well, not the problem, that the fact is, is that when they were estimated way back initially, it was an estimate based on the data we had at the time. And we have projects that come in higher or come in lower. That was excessive. We've never experienced one like that. We did hire a consultant to review those projects to give us an indication as to, you know, the circumstances around that increased cost. And we referenced it in that particular report. And he pointed out the various issues with soil and other construction challenges that we had on those projects. So it was, it was much more than anticipated. So, I mean, I could ask Mr. Holman to comment if you'd like. He is more familiar with the details on those projects.
No, I, I don't think that's necessary. Anyway, I think these are specific questions. And if Counselor Iannone's going to make a motion regarding the development funds, regarding the reserves, I'm concerned that we're, we're that low even on reserves. And we're told we got all kinds of stuff. We got reserves because of the $35 million from the convention center. What kind of free reserves have we got to set aside that there's nothing attached to?
Currently, we have 75, at the end of December, you have $75 million, $79 million. The total reserves that are obligatory, or the total reserve funds are $48 million. In special purpose reserves, you have $17 million. And in capital holding, you have $13 million. There's a report that's going to be coming at the next council meeting that'll, that'll show that as.
Any reserve funds that are just set aside for emergency purposes, et cetera?
Certainly, there is. There's the Capital Operating Fund, which is $6.4 million. And there's others I can, you know, I, I'd have to look through all the legislation that surrounds these. We have, you know, well over 25 separate reserve funds that we can talk to, special purpose reserve funds, et cetera.
So, so we don't. So we don't have unlimited access to reserve funds. They're all allocated, and it isn't an abundant amount, as was suggested previously.
Seventy, the reserve funds are not, they're, you're quite correct, there are, there are some that are discretionary, there are some that are obligatory. But that doesn't mean that the monies is due in the next operating period. It could be that these funds are sit there until they're due, and every fund is a different opportunity. At the end of 2007, just to clarify, we had $11.6 million in development charges. Now, as you, as you know, as those of us that work with development charges, there are different development charges. There's water and sewer, parks and rec and fire, and each of these have different amounts. So at the end of 2007, you had $11.6 million.
Through the chair, then, just one more question. How did we go from no development charges to a couple of weeks later saying, "Oh, now we got $10 million in development charges"?
I'm not sure that anyone ever said there was no development charges. At the end of 2007, when we were preparing the capital budget, we noticed that in this water and sewer area, or in the sewer area, which, because development charges are specific as to where you use the money. You collect the money, and then you use the money in those certain projects. And at the end of 2007, there was $2.5 million approximately in the sewer area. To fund the two projects that you're talking about required somewhere in around $14 million. That's where it was. Now, we have all the confidence in the world that as we move forward, the future development charges will fully fund this. The two projects that you're talking about have, in estimate, $30 million of potential development charges based on the 4,500 units that are there. Going forward, and this is how development charges work, going forward, you will recoup the money. It's the timing of the money. And that's, that's what it was.
Counselor Iannone, is to the motion or to?
This is to the discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. Again, clearly, I don't understand. Because Mr. McDonald said, "We have reserves that we borrow from. We have a line of credit." This doesn't say this. This says we're going to continue to use from reserve funds. In the, here, he said, "We didn't borrow. We used our reserves." Mr. Burden told us we did borrow. In this, in the meeting last Thursday, I asked the simple question, "Do we have to pay back the money that we took for that project?" Yes, you do. You borrowed it. I have a line of credit. My line of credit is not my savings. So to take it down to the simple denominator, in your running a household, you have savings and you have a line of credit. If I have to use my line of credit and borrow it back, I am not using my savings. You can equate that to reserves being savings and line of credit being borrowing from the city. We borrowed that money. So the misnomer that the project could continue to come from reserves funds are absolutely contrary. And I want council to understand this. Contrary to what Janice and I were told on the 18th, and contrary to what I was told in Mr. Burden's office, contrary to the document that was laid out before me and explained page by page. The interim borrowing bylaw is to borrow money, please correct me if I'm wrong, from a financial institution. Are we borrowing our own reserves? Do we, do, I mean, I can go to the bank and use my line of credit. I don't have to do another borrowing application. What was the borrowing application for that Mr. Burden showed me? Not Mr. McDonald, to Mr. Burden. What was the borrowing application that he showed me?
I don't know what that is, but we'll ask Mr. Burden that question.
Through the chair, the borrowing documents we looked at were the banking commitment letters that detail how the bylaw, which you approved 24 million in operating borrowing, how it would be used. And you break it up into different facilities. That's the bank commitment letter. The comments around using the borrowing bylaw, over the course of that November through to February period, when there was not the available cash sources that we could easily use in order to pay the bills, we would use the line of credit. We have several bank accounts. We have investments. Sometimes it's cheaper not to actually suck money out of your investments accounts, which are earning very good interest, and just dip into the line of credit for a short period of time. And that's where you use the 407 bylaw. You use that in order to just level out your, your cash flows. It's fairly involved.
Thank you.
Counselor Iannone.
He just gave the answer I wanted to hear. The money for that project was borrowed and approved by this council. Mr. Counselor Maves just said he thoroughly believes or understands the information given to him. Mr. Burden just said that the money that I'm talking about, that we were not told that we were borrowing to fund a project, was in that interim borrowing bylaw. That's not reserves. We passed an interim borrowing bylaw that 6.5 million was in. I am not at a line to say, "Tell us." If you're passing, if you're putting a capital project that I approved, that I voted for based on development charges, you better tell me when I'm voting on a document that now has us borrowing the money you said were going to be covered by development charges. Open, transparent, and accountable. It comes down to the simplest denominator. Tell us. And when we ask and we have a problem with it, don't drag it out for six months trying to cover your own butt.
Ms. McDonald.
You know, I thought coming into this, I understood it, but the more I'm hearing these questions and comments, I'm getting confused. But the problem is, is that there are certain principles of finance that we all use in our homes that you can apply to this. But you can't go to the simplest denominator and expect to resolve this whole financing step. And, and I think that's the problem here, you know? We did take some time and do a bit of a workshop on financing of capital projects a while ago. And maybe we need another one to deal more with current and operating. But I explained this in our discussion last week, when we go to debenturing, it's like getting a mortgage. That's what it's all about. And whether we're into line of credit or reserves, it's internal financing, and we view it as short-term financing projects. And I know that's not acceptable with certain councils, but that's a fact, and that's how it works. So again, I'm not sure we're getting it further. We'd be happy to provide the, I'm sure the motion, the information details on reserves and on DDCs, and we can provide them hopefully in this meeting.
Thank you. Members of council, we've had a long discussion on this. We do have a motion. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. And I mean, I appreciate the opinions of Counselor Iannone and Counselor Wing. However, there's just, there's just two items that I wish to disagree with. One would be the statement, Your Worship, that $10 million is missing. I don't, I don't particularly, I guess, appreciate that type of comment. I think we have a lot of good, honest people that work in our accounting department. I think there's a lot of checks and balances that are in place. We also have an outside accounting firm, a local one, Crawford, Smith &amp; Swallow, that verifies our figures on an annual basis, Your Worship. So I, I think those type of statements are very unrealistic, and I wish, and I wish they wouldn't be said by counselors, Your Worship. The second, the second statement, Your Worship, would deal with the crisis in confidence. And I heard a number of times that we have a crisis in confidence. I'm not quite sure, Your Worship, who's to find as "we." But I mean, I personally don't believe that, that staff has any motive to either misrepresent or change or alter the facts of matters that they bring forward to us. I believe that we have a lot of good people that are in our senior positions, that are leading city hall, and that are doing the best that they can on behalf of the city of Niagara Falls. And if I didn't believe that, Your Worship, then I would be asking you to adjourn the meeting, and I'd be asking council to go into committee of the hold to discuss it, which is where it should be discussed. Thank you.
Good. We do have a motion before us, members of council, so I'll call the vote. The motion is to move the recommendation contained in the report. And we have a second under, and Counselor Diodati. All those in favor? Please hold your hands up. One, two, three, four, five opposed. One, two, three, the motion is carried. Does council wish to make any further motions? Counselor Iannone.
Just to correct Counselor Peter Angelo, I was sure I stood up here and said I didn't say "missing." I said "short" and wanted to know how come we weren't told. But, you know, that's, again, it's spin. I'd like to make a motion that we look at the who, what, where, and when. Where did the shortage come from? Meaning, where did we overspend? If we didn't overspend, were we short development charges we thought would materialize and did not? On what projects? And I want to know if council approved the projects that we overspent? Or did you bring a report to council saying, "We are over budget on this project. We need extra amount of money. They're coming from development charges and have us approve it." Because I've gone back through two years, and we don't have those documents. So I'd like to know, it, it doesn't come down to what we are told. The baseline is always what we're not told. It has nothing to do with what we are told.
And I think maybe the problem is not what you're not told, what you don't understand or what you're not willing to accept or listen to. And I think that's the problem here. Because we've told the same story over and over again. There is nothing that has not been told. There's nothing that's been concealed. But, you know, I mean, I feel like we're just banging our head against the wall here, saying the same thing. So if the story has been told, the questions asked about those from the reserves, I think are, are good questions. We'd be happy to provide them. But there isn't anything that isn't told.
Okay.
Can I finish with my motion now?
Yes, you're not finished on that? Did you want to have subsequent comments on that? Or did you?
Pardon me? No. And I'd like, I'd like staff to provide the documents that they said in this council exist. Mr. McDonald said he's told the story. And I, I would stand here and admit I was wrong, Mr. Mayor, if I could go back and find the story as told to council. Because there isn't a document to this council explaining any of my concerns.
Do we have a second under that motion? Counselor Wing seconded the motion.
Yeah, in all fairness, I mean, we've been through this again. You know, can you give me a succinct motion other than back and forth and here and there and who, what, where, and why? I mean, I think this motion sounds almost exactly the same as your motion you made back in April 28th, which led to these two reports. I mean, we have indicated that we're going to bring back an accounting of the development charges fund. I think that's the start. If you have questions after that, then I think that'll be an easier way to deal with the matter.
Counselor Wing.
As I said earlier this evening, I have concerns with the timeliness of the information that we are given. And I cited the $2 million contract that we lost, we still don't officially know about. The only tip-off we had as a council that the development charges weren't quite as high as we expected they were was when our budget, capital budget binder was peppered with comments about eligible for X amount of development charges if available, eligible for X amount of development charges if available. And that, those were the red flags that set off the questioning, which led to all this. You know, when we get a municipal works report that says the project is going to be funded by development charges, we expect that the development charges are there to fund it. We don't know unless we're told that there's a bit of a cash crunch. You know, and it's this whole timing that is of concern to me. If I'm making a decision, I want to know all the relevant facts, everything that's pertinent to that decision, especially when it comes to public money.
Mr. Jen, did you wish to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just in regards to transit. I guess there was an issue that staff wasn't letting council know about transit, about the loss of Trenton Lake to the service. I guess there was some numbers quoted. There's also an indication we didn't let you know. We have a meeting with the committees, the board council on that issue. And the fact is that the loss of Trenton Lake, of course, staff at transit are all scratching and figuring out why they left. We're still trying to figure that out. But the loss was a gross amount of $125 million with a net amount to the city of $300,000. And the fact is that staff at transit have done mitigating measures to address it. And at this point, we're at $120,000. So we're working on reducing that amount. So it's not $2 million, it's not $125,000. It's $120,000.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do you have the comment on the, on the motion yet?
No, once again, I don't know what the motion is.
Counselor Iannone, we.
Thank you. I'd like staff to bring back a report that showed where the shortage was spent.
I think the first one, excuse me, Your Worship, I think the report on the DCs will show exactly where all the money was spent. And I think as the clerk says, if from that there are specific questions that you want more detail on, we can, we can do that. So we'll show you where all the money was spent in development charges.
Is that satisfactory?
He drives the show.
Is that, okay. Then we have the next item on the agenda. We'll move on if we could. Yes, Counselor Thompson.
Can we include reserves in that? I'd like to see all the reserve accounts.
Yeah, we'll do that, of course.
And whether they're allocated or not. Because to me, if you validate money, you don't have to.
Okay, Ms. McDonald, you have that, those points clear?
In terms of the motions, yes, that's true.
Okay. All right, members of council, Mr. Clerk.
Do we have a motion now? You know, then you have to vote on the motion. That's the way it works here.
Can you qualify on that, Mr. Clerk?
We're going to bring a report back on development charges and reserve funds. Keep it as simple as that.
Okay, we have a motion before us. You've all heard the question, the comments, and move the question. All those in favor? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Move on to the next report, L 2008 15, borrowing for capital expenditures. Pleasure, council? Moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Deodati. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Excuse me. Was there any opposition to that last motion? It was carried unanimously, please.
I didn't see councillor Ayenoni stand.
I think she was...
Are you opposed or are you for? Simple as that.
She was in favor. Is she now?
Okay.
Couple of comments this evening. Members of council like to offer condolences, if I could, to Sue and Wayne Patrick. Sue is a current employee of Niagara Transit, and Wayne is retired from Niagara Transit. We recently lost Wayne's mother, Doris Ethel Patrick. Also condolences to the family of Judge Donald Wallace, a former city alderman between 1973 and '75, and provincial court judge from 1976 until his retirement in 2006. Judge Wallace, as you may be aware, passed away on June 28th. We offer our thoughts and prayers to their families as they deal with the loss of their loved ones. I'd like to continue as well by acknowledging some more notable events in our city. On July 1st marked another wonderful candidate parade and celebration in our city. I'd like to congratulate city staff and each and every volunteer for their diligent efforts to ensure this event was a success. Thank you to all involved in the planning. It was a pleasure to see the wonderful turnout, and so many of our residents enjoying the day. They even received a bouquet this morning's Niagara Falls review. I was also pleased to join the residents of Cavendish Manor on Saturday at their thank you barbecue. It gave me a great pleasure to congratulate all who helped with the safety and rescue effort at Cavendish during their May 14th fire. The community truly came together to come to the aid of the residents, and I was pleased to pass on thanks and gratitude of the members of council to the fire and emergency services, Niagara Transit, and the neighboring residents. I'd like to mention some upcoming events in our community that we view of interest as well. I'm pleased to be attending the 2008 Great Lakes St. Lawrence Cities Initiative Annual Conference next week in Toronto. Important work is being done at this conference to advance and strengthen Great Lakes communities, and to discuss environmental and economic impacts in the lakes and the surrounding cities. I look forward to contributing to that discussion and bringing back some valuable information to our city. As you know, there's a number of initiatives that are beginning to take shape in our downtown core. And on Tuesday evenings, they've established a car show as part of Celebrate Old Downtown Summer Entertainment Schedule. Invite our residents to enjoy the car shows each Tuesday night on Queen Street, I believe, for the next four weeks. And that concludes our comments this evening. Move on to communications and comments to the clerk. We have Municipal Heritage Committee requesting council support of the City of Thorndale Resolution requesting federal tax incentives for the rehabilitation of heritage buildings, and also informing council of the committees of opposition to the Prairie nightclub. We have a recommendation for the approval of council. Moved by councillor Wing, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? The motion is carried. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council's consideration?
No, your worship.
Okay. Move on to the ratification of community services. I'm calling on committee chair councillor Ayenoni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of June 23rd, 2008 be approved. Under reports, TS 2008-38, request to park on Boulevard. That staff work out a lease with the property owner to allow parking 15 meters from the corner. And staff investigate the installation of a safety barrier to prevent parking within 15 meters of the corner. PD 2008-53, to request an additional access, raise auto sale 4874 Bridge Street. That staff investigate an additional access on First Avenue and how to accommodate the display of vehicles on the property. MW 2008-39, Stamford Town and Country Florist, 6339 Crawford Street. That the committee recommend that council rescind its original direction and allow the property to remain paved. PD 2008-60, planning for the employment background paper from the Ministry of Public Infrastructure Renewal. That committee forward this report to the Ministry of Public Infrastructure Renewal, Region of Niagara and area municipalities. MW 2008-35, Fernwood Estates External Servicing. One, that the city enter into an agreement with the developer of Fernwood Estates to carry out the external servicing required for the subdivision. And two, that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to execute the agreement. R 2008-26, Smart Centers allocation to bike lane Millennium Trail. That staff pursue a bike lane on Oakwood Drive and Millennium Trail, and that staff investigate the applicability of development charges for development of the Millennium Trail. TS 2008-42, City of Niagara Falls Speed Control Policy. That the document titled Policy and Procedure for Initiating Reviewing and Implementing Speed Control Programs be adopted. PD 2008-65, request by the downtown BIA to allow for activities along Queen Street. And one, that the use of the sidewalks and parking spaces along Queen Street for various activities from April 1st to October 31st be approved, subject to the proposed guidelines that form part of this report, and a review of the activities to be carried out at the conclusion of the season. And two, that the placement of new signage and street banners at strategic corners in the downtown area to help promote and direct people to the downtown be approved, subject to satisfying the City, Region, and Niagara Parks Commission's sign requirements, plus the sandwich board sizes as requested by the downtown BIA. BDD 2008-04, OPG Contingency Fund for Downtown Events. That up to $50,000 from the OPG Tourism and Promotion Contingency Fund be allocated for the promotion of downtown events being held through the summer. I so moved.
Moved by councillor Ayenoni, seconded by councillor Wing. Any comments or questions further? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Ratification of in-camera recommendations, Mr. Clerk?
Few items, your worship. Number one, that council declines the offer of Warren-DAC investments to purchase the Montrose Road Business Park at this time. Number two, that the city not sell city-owned property on Buttry Street at this time, and staff investigate the availability of adjacent property. Three, that the, it's recommended that council approve the agreement of purchase and sale for lands located on the east side of Dorchester Road, between the railroad tracks to the south and Montrose Road to the north from Hodan Investment Corporation, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute the agreement of purchase. That council, recommendation that council approve an agreement with Giovanni and Rose Musari for the conveyance of an easement on 6058 Stevens Street to protect a sanitary sewer located under the Musari's garage, and that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute said agreement.
Thank you. A motion to ratify the in-camera recommendations. Moved by councillor Beaves, and seconded by councillor Kerrio. Any comments or questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. We have the consent agenda moved before us. Move the entire agenda, councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Deodati. Any discussion or comment? Councillor Wing?
Just on TS 2008 41, automated bus stop announcement technology. That's going to cost us about an extra half million dollars that we weren't anticipating. Is the Ontario Human Rights Commission providing any funding toward this?
Mr. Dren?
Mr. Mayor, we're not, and we're not suggesting that we fit any costs for technology or technology. We're at this stage, they can't buy it without technology.
Okay. It just really bothers me that they're up there in Toronto making decisions in a vacuum. And meanwhile, transit systems throughout the province have been working cooperatively with advocacy and disability groups to develop transportation standards to implement via the Accessibility for Ontario-ones with Disability Act. So, I mean, transit systems were being proactive, and along comes the Human Rights Commission and decides that's not good enough. And so, we've got all this other stuff now that we have to do. What if a small municipality decided that it couldn't afford to continue to offer public transit as a result? You know, this is money they can't afford to do. You know, because you can't just announce it manually, probably, because there's already several transit systems taking this to the Ministry of Labor, saying it's an unsafe practice. So, what if transit routes get cut? Is that going to help the visually impaired? I mean, you know, I just don't get the Ontario Human Rights Commission. If they're going to bring down judgments like this, that are going to cost municipalities, that are trying to do a lot already on very little, and trying to keep their debt from spiraling upward, then make some monies available to us to implement this stuff. That just really bothers me.
Councillor Deodati?
I just had to say, I have to echo the concerns of councillor Wing, because I thought the same thing. And I thought, well, who, it's really unfortunate. And are there that many people that need this service that they couldn't use it on an as-needed basis? And my other question was, well, how the heck are they doing it in the tourist industry? With the double-deck buses and all the other tour programs? You know, like, some have spielers and some don't. But how it's unsafe, I really don't understand. But I too, I'm glad that they're investigating, but we're not committing any of this money at this point. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor? Motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. We do have a request, members of council, from Mr. Josh Kaufman of the Smart Centers, to speak to the bylaws relating to the shopping center development at Oakwood Drive. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Kaufman to come forward, if we could. Yes, please. Move by, no, we don't. It's on the agenda. Okay, the clerk has had it cleared and ready. So, Mr. Kaufman, welcome.
Good evening. Long night.
Sure.
Thanks for sticking through. Your worship, members of council, as I've introduced. My name is Josh Kaufman. I'm director of land development at Smart Centers. I didn't have the good pleasure of being here at a public meeting on the 26th, but just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight and go over. And, I mean, part of the thing I want to do whenever an item is linked to our applications on the agenda, being it the reading of the bylaw in this case. And there were potential concerns. I've always made myself available. So, it's twofold. One is to make a quick brief presentation, and two, if there's any questions for council, I'm here to address them, in the event there are. So, I'm here this evening making delegation accounts as relates to the application on 2008 107 108, otherwise known as Oakwood Shopping Centers. And this is the development down at QEW and McLeod, and within the Niagara Square note. Over the past few weeks, we've been collaborating with staff to finalize the bylaws as relates to consideration of the bylaws this evening. As you know, our development's totaling 425,000 square feet, roughly a $52 million investment within the Niagara Square note. Much needed, I will note as well. Our development hopes to be presented by way of site plan, working with staff over the next few months. I do note that there was a letter of objection that was raised by our vendor, Consulate Ventures. And in the objection, it relates to the bylaw as drafted, and an issue relates to positioning of our building, and how our building was positioned, whether it's facing the QEW or it's facing south towards Oakwood. And there was questions and concerns related to how that positioning is going to affect the overall development of Consulate Ventures' property, which is roughly a one-and-a-half acre parcel. We've, again, opened ourselves to try and work with Consulate Ventures. We're able and willing to work through on the site plan stage. We think that we can collaborate together and have a development that works best for everyone. At the same token, we're taking information, as it's coming from staff, in terms of their desires of how best to go ahead and position this building on this 35-acre development, which we are in agreement with. However, unfortunately, as long as I've got a letter of objection that's being raised by a potential appellant as relates to this bylaw being Consulate Ventures on the position of the building, I have to, no choice, unfortunately, to object to that restriction that's drafted within the bylaw. So, that's why I'm here tonight to go ahead and just put on the record. Second, just as a quick update, there was a concern raised with respect to counsel for RioCan, Joel Farber, who was at the May 26th meeting. Again, I hear the objection, I read the letter. I want to do what I can to address the issues. We've been having a series of meetings as relates to overall McLeod Road improvements. I'm inviting RioCan to the table, and I'm hoping that RioCan as well will engage, and we can all work collaboratively within the whole Niagara Square note to figure out the problems. Right now, development is at a hold, as we know. But we think with all the power that we have totaling the million-plus square feet of development, we can make things happen. But again, it's, a group has to function. So, with those comments, again, we want to proceed. The opportunity is now, and thank you for the consideration. Any questions, I'm here to address.
Okay. Councillor Ayenoni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought councillor Peter Angelo made a motion that night that would allow at-site plan the ability for that building to be flipped and face the highway. Maybe I misunderstood that. We did ask your representative that night, is that what you want us to do? He didn't say yes. But I did ask the question to our staff, would staff still be supportive of the application if it was flipped? And they said yes. So, are you looking now to have it highway-facing? Because the comment we made that night was, who are we to tell Walmart how to successfully build a building? I'm confused as to then what we approved, because I thought we left the door open.
Let's get that clarified. The clerk wants to clarify that point, what was approved.
If you actually look in your agenda at the beginning of the bylaw sections, I actually included the minutes from the May 26th meeting. And on page seven, you'll note ordered that the recommendation report be approved with the amendments that staff work with the developer mitigating impacts related to the orientation of the building on the adjacent property, and that the adjacent neighboring property be included in the site plan process. And then the other, the other motion was related to the Millennium Trail, which we dealt with before. So, that's what was approved.
Okay. Councillor Ayenoni?
Thank you. Then I guess my question through you to Mr. Hurlavich is, can they still come in and make a, if we don't pass this bylaw now that has you facing the direction you don't want to be? I mean, we spoke ourselves. I'm confused. You wanted it flipped to be highway-facing. You no longer want that?
Through your worship? Councillor Ayenoni?
We're quite comfortable with the fact that the Walmart building, which is the anchor, is positioned 390 degrees facing towards the south. No issue with it. But the problem is, because that item made its way into the zoning bylaw is a reason why Consulate Ventures has objected to the application, the zoning bylaw in itself, because there wasn't any flexibility. There was basically, in essence, hogtying them in terms of any decision to work through a site plan process on how eventually that site lays out. So, from our standpoint as developer, we have no issue with it. We work with staff, we're happy with it. The issue is, you've got, and I'm going to lead here, is your, let's think, hopefully with passing of a bylaw, to have a potential objection, which would put us, this unprovincial framework, to deal with this, I don't think is what the right, I mean, I don't think that was the objective coming out of council on the 26th. Is that? And that's kind of more of a question back to everyone.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wing?
I seconded the motion so that it would go through as staff recommended. And they said that with the department store facing the QEW as it had been originally presented, the rear-loading and service areas were exposed to Oakwood Drive, and having the loading and garbage facilities facing Oakwood was unattractive, and would have a significant negative impact on the streetscape of Oakwood Drive. Reorienting the building to face south not only significantly improved the development's appearance to the public, but reduced the building's massing along Oakwood Drive. And it was staff who recommended that with amending bylaw, secure this orientation. Now, another thing that happened was we allowed a reduction in building setbacks. And that reduction reduced setback for the Walmart and Home Improvement Store was because they were the reoriented buildings. So, the setbacks that we approved were because of the reorientation. There was a reduction in parking, which means that without as many parking facilities available, we're probably going to have people, more people walking and bicycling, especially since we're putting bicycle lanes in. The appearance of Oakwood and the massing and not having to go past loading and garbage facilities is all the more important because of that. I think it's crucial that we leave this in the bylaw so that we fulfill what staff has recommended. And if, you know, if somebody doesn't like it, well, you know, it's not to...
Mr. Kaufman is agreeing to that. He's saying, to us, he's agreeing to that. It's going to pose a problem for Consulate Holdings, which has land now budding this property. And they're going to appeal the bylaw, which is going to cause unnecessary grief for Mr. Kaufman. We've directed him to do that. Council passed this motion, and what we're saying to you, and Mr. Kaufman's agreeing to this, but that's going to cause a challenge, because the neighboring owner doesn't like the orientation of the building that was really forced upon Smart Centers.
Okay, but I'm quite concerned about the general public rather than one owner. I don't know, if Mr. Hurlavich would care to recommend differently than he did last time...
Perhaps Mr. Kaufman can explain, though, at the hearing, at the, when we had our public hearing, public meeting, the request was made by staff, and Smart Centers agreed. We did have a position at the time. You heard Mr. Seraklet express his concern about now the building backing onto his property.
Okay, but he can either put in an objection when there's good planning reasons for putting this in the bylaw, or what happens? We don't put it in the bylaw, and the building ends up facing the way staff said not to face it? I mean, where are we going to work this out?
Mr. Kaufman, would you want to address that, please?
Councillor Wing? In my opinion, I think this is something that can be dealt with, the site plan. Staff have the ability to go ahead and approve site plan. If at the end of the day, the building is positioned in a certain way, the site plan application is not going to be approved. is not going to be approved. I can provide undertakings that obviously we'd like to go ahead and have the building positioned as all desired, turned 90 degrees facing towards the south. But again, my issue is that it's being put into the actual zoning bylaw, and it is a citing issue, in my opinion. And if it was put into as a site plan issue, and we dealt with it through the course of the site plan, again, reality is, I'm not trying to do anything underhandily, but again, we're no longer dealing with the plan, with, I guess, the public process at that point, and we're into the site plan process. And I guess the issue from Consulate Ventures is, there's no issue on their end. If it's in the site plan, they really don't have any involvement at that point. Which is, again, as a good developer, I'm not here to go ahead and snowball anyone. I'm here to work collaboratively with Consulate Ventures.
And, you know, your worship, we've seen that with other developments where we've said, you know, it's involved the residents, and then when it comes right down to it, we find that we've passed the bylaw, the residents are pretty much powerless to get anything affected. And I'd just like to hear from Mr. Hurlavich whether he cares to change his recommendation that the amending bylaw secure this reorientation.
Mr. Beeman's going to give us an opinion on that as well, so.
Just wanted to address one particular issue, a very important thing that Mr. Kaufman just said, and that, and he has said that Mr. Soraklet's not going to have any involvement in the site plan. In other words, yeah, that's right. Mr. Soraklet won't have any appeal if he doesn't like what goes on in the site plan negotiations. So I think that's important for council to understand. If the concern is the interest, if any of you are concerned about the issue that Mr. Soraklet has raised, as far as the orientation of the building is concerned, from Mr. Soraklet's point of view, his right of appeal depends on the orientation of the building staying in the bylaw, whether it's the orientation he wants or not. It's important to bear that in mind, because his right of appeal depends on the terms of the zoning bylaw, not the site plan. I can't speak to Mr. Hurlavich's recommendation, but I just think it's important for council to understand that from a strategy point of view, depending on how you see the public interest.
I think the essence of the approval, members of council, was the request that, maybe Counsel Peter Angelo wants to qualify. Do you want to speak to that, Counsel?
Yeah, your worship, I guess just to, just to echo the comments of Mr. Beeman, that was the, I guess that was the whole essence of my words the night that we passed the actual bylaw. I kept saying that I wanted the orientation and that I supported staff's recommendation to have the orientation in the approval of the zoning bylaw. And because, your worship, there is an appeal mechanism to the bylaw, whereas if we moved it to the site plan stage, there's absolutely no appeal process that is available to, to any other, I guess, adjacent landowners. So, I mean, I appreciate Mr. Kaufman being here, and I understand that he's asking us to remove that from the zoning bylaw so that he can just simply get on with his development. And I think that he must know that if that is pushed over to the site plan stage, that there is absolutely no appeal process that is available to any other adjacent landowner through, through the site plan process. So that, so that in essence, there would be, there would be no objection that would, that would be able to be formally made, with exception of the objection to staff. I don't understand, your worship, I guess, Mr. Kaufman says that it was, it was council's, I guess, change to the actual motion. And as I read our change, and it's right here in the front of the report that Dean has given to me, I don't think that this actually affects the orientation of the building on the lands. And I think that the recommendation came loud and clear from staff, as Counsel Wing has already pointed out on page eight, that the orientation be included in the zoning bylaw. And that's what I will make available.
And that may be a very serious technical issue with regard to the entire hearing, as you can well appreciate, that we did have staff direct the opponent to reorient the building. It was incorporated at the time of the approval. The concerned parties expressed their opinions, and it was the essence of the meeting. And I think if you start to alter that from what we have in our bylaw, unfortunately, Mr. Kaufman may have a double challenge, but he's probably certain to face an appeal process which will slow you down, I'm sure, in terms of what you want to do. And I understand that time is money for, for you in terms of the interest clock ticking away. But I think that the opinion we have is that the essence of the entire meeting was based upon the approval of the council with the incorporation of the orientation of the building to be put in the bylaw. As, I think, is that fair to say, Counsel Peter Angelo, with your intentions? Yeah. So, members of council, we have a matter before. Yes, Counsel, carry on.
Quick question, then, your worship. Then if it went to appeal, and for some reason it held the appeal, we could lose this development because our staff has insisted that the building face south. Is that true?
Well, well, I don't know if it's that much as, much as the fact that we have it incorporated in the bylaw, and I'm not sure how Mr. Kaufman's agreeing to that, because it was forced upon him to, by staff's recommendation, to have, for the various reasons outlined at that meeting. We did have opposition who expressed concern, and they were here, and they presented the facts that they thought was, they didn't want to see the orientation that way. So we have a bylaw before us that is appealable, because it includes, it includes an issue with regard to the orientation.
My point being that if we had have oriented the building the way Mr. Kaufman wanted in the first place, that the Soraklet people would not get object. They were very happy with it facing the QEW, because they didn't want the rear of the building facing their property. As they say, that it doesn't matter that it faces the street, there's nothing on the street except I took it out. So we're forcing the issue by forcing the orientation south. Is that true?
That's right. We had a motion approved, that the recommendation of staff, that this be incorporated in the bylaw.
Understand. But let's be clear, they did not want the building facing south. They wanted the building facing the QEW. We insisted that the building be faced south. And that's a matter of interpretation, which would look better.
And that was done, basically, to appease the staff with respect to good planning, as the Director of Planning explained why. He made a comment about being a world-class city, he wanted to have the right orientation to give us some proper planning.
It's a matter of opinion, your worship, because you can see the building from MacLeod Road, and there's probably 50 times more cars go by MacLeod Road in an hour than go by that other street in a week. So that's a matter of opinion on which way would look better.
Well, members of council, we have a bylaw here that, we, you know, if we, we're actually committed to passing and approving. I'm not sure how we can get around the, Mr. Beeman, is there anything further you'd like to add in terms of direction?
I think that if council's inclined to reconsider the matter, I guess we would look to the clerk for instructions on how the council goes about a reconsideration. It is possible to change a bylaw between the time when the public meeting takes place and is when it's presented to council. What's required in order to do that, however, is a resolution of council that the change in the bylaw is not, I can't remember the exact words, but basically not material, sorry, not substantive, not, not material. The, and I think I would advise council against doing that in this case, basically because nearly half the debate in the first meeting was about this one thing, so it obviously is important. The kind of things that happen where that section is relied upon is where, you know, they lessen a side yard by half a meter or something in between when it comes, and they, you know, have to, you forgot to allow for road widening or something, you have to set the, offset the set yard to allow for the, for the road widening. So those are procedural possibilities. Probably the safest thing to do in this case, if you intend to reconsider, would be to have, to actually have the formal reconsideration vote, and then circulate for a new public meeting, have another public meeting, and have another go. And that's assuming you're, and I'll have to, I'll defer to Dean to explain the actual reconsideration procedure, but that would be the first step. Then, once that's done, instruct staff to circulate another public meeting, and have another public meeting to consider the zoning again.
Mr. Clerk?
I agree entirely, entirely with what Mr. Beeman said. In the past, we have had reconsiderations on planning approvals. Niagara Worship Center, I remember that one, where you actually did, and I know, ultimate, Iainoni remembers it, because I think God came down that day. Yeah. So, I mean, but in those instances, they were public planning meetings, and we had to re-advertise, so the matters came back about a month later. The phrase that Mr. Beeman was looking for, minor in nature, and I think he already adequately explained, we don't view this as minor in nature, that therefore, if you wanted to reconsider, we believe you'd have to have another public meeting on the matter.
I guess the bottom line is, do we want to push the developers to an OMB hearing? Or do we want a motion to reconsider? So I think I'll make a motion to reconsider and have him file a public notice for another public meeting.
You have a motion on the floor by Counsel Inoue. Is there a seconder? Are you seconding the motion?
Yes, I will, your worship, but I just want to clarify. I mean, I just want to make sure we put this past the developers.
Well, if we get the motion on the floor, please.
Yeah. Well, so I'll make the second, and then now that it's on the floor, ask these gentlemen, is this the, the path, is this acceptable? Are you comfortable with this path? We're going to go through it one more time to, to make this final determination.
Mr. Kaufman?
To Counsel DiDati, it's obviously not my, my choice to want to go through another public meeting and, and public process at this point. I think time is the essence. I think we want to get this going as soon as we can. And I think if anything, what I'd like to do is maybe just put it, hopefully staff can be directed to work with ourselves and Consulate Ventures to work on the best design possible, to hopefully try and deal with any potential further objection, as relates to the setting of the building. At the end of the day, I think if we're both working together on this, we can probably resolve it.
Mr. Kaufman, I didn't hear your first comments. Are you saying you wish to proceed?
Wish to proceed, yeah. We, we don't want to go through another public meeting process.
But then, if we leave the bylaw alone, then of course you, you have to work with the neighbor.
And, and that, as I'm saying from the first statement, is I'm entirely pleased to work in that direction with the neighbor, with staff support, obviously, working together if they could be directed. So we work the three of us together to try and resolve it. That would be the best.
So, members of council, then you, you've heard the-
I'll withdraw my motion then, but my understanding was, he didn't want to go to an OMB hearing. So, I mean, either you are or you're not.
Yeah. You're withdrawing the motion, and you're seconding it, that's fine. Mr. Kaufman, do you want to speak to that again? I guess you want to take your chances?
Your worship, Counsel Inoue. I think after hearing the process this would have to go through from the removal, this restriction from the bylaws addressed by Mr. Beeman and Dean, I guess my, the clerk, sorry, I, I obviously don't want to have to go through that process. And I think we'll take our shots, I think, dealing with Consulate Ventures, with staff, and we'll do our best to do the best thing we can to set it up properly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaufman. And then I-
Apologize if there was confusion going around that, but that was-
And you see the technical problem that we have to deal with. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Clerk, can we ask if there's any additional bylaws or amendments for the bylaws listed for council's consideration?
Just one administrative or technical matter. Bylaw 2008-113 is the one related to the Hodan investment sale that we just outlined in the ratification of in-camera. There will be a minor change to the attachment on that bylaw, and that's related to the supplementary report that you were given during in-camera related to the tanks. So that, there will be some minor wording changes on that.
Okay. That's so noted. So then I guess we'll have a motion to introduce the bylaws. Bylaws be given a first reading, moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel Wing. Again, you've, accounts, you've heard the motion. Any questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried.
Bylaws 2008-107 to 2008-119 read a first time.
You have a motion to give the bylaws a second and third reading, moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel DiDati. And once again, council's heard the motion. Any further questions or comments? Having seen none, all those in favor, motions carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2008-107 to 2008-119 read a second and third time.
New business for council's consideration this evening. I have Counsel Wing, Counsel DiDati, and Counsel Peter Angelo.
Thank you, your worship. The Main and Ferry BIA at their June 24 meeting unanimously passed a resolution that the City of Niagara Falls be requested to extend the bylaw for the downtown area, which prevents the opening of large clubs to the Main and Ferry area. And I'd like to comment that we all support business investment in this city, but at what cost? You know, what cost for the city and the residents and the longstanding businesses who have to pay for negative impacts of the wrong sort of clubs, for the increase in police, fire, and bylaw enforcement costs, for cleanup crews? A walk cost to public safety in the city's image. The Main and Ferry BIA welcomes with open arms good quality businesses, which have been establishing there lately. And yes, we do get excited when they open. I have personally encouraged the media to visit Petruolo Floral Design Studio. Marty Petruolo has created a shop that you'd expect to find right in the heart of Niagara on the lake. And it's not only that, but it was inspired by his grandfather, the dentist who was very prominent in our community and its growth. You know, there's a story there, a real story, but where's the media been? You know, they haven't gotten very excited. Or what about their Ego reopening this year? You know, that's a city tradition dating back to 1936. And there's other good businesses that have established or reestablished there recently. We want to continue that trend, the trend of good businesses like those, not uses that are going to undermine the vision that the city and the BIA through the historic Drummondville CIP are attempting to achieve. So therefore, I move that we extend bylaw 2004-200, passed to regulate nightclubs in the Queen Street area, to the historic Drummondville CIP area. And my motion includes a request that staff investigate updating bylaw 2004-200, and specifically that they investigate adopting the City of Toronto's definition of a nightclub in place of our current definition, and incorporating the City of Toronto's definition of a hybrid in order to reflect current trends. And that staff can look at and consider adopting Mississauga zoning and separation requirements for such clubs in this city. And finally, my motion also includes a request that staff investigate and report back on the feasibility of adopting an interim control bylaw for the Sylvia Place Market and Historic Drummondville area, based on the City of Ottawa's 2006 interim control bylaw for the Byward Market area. Nice move.
Moved by Counsel Wing, seconded by Counsel Inoue. The clerk would like to make some comments.
Well, I'm going to have to get that sheet, because that was a lot of information. Well, in essence, inherent in all those requests is that it'll be referred to staff, and staff will have to come back with a report on it. So, you know, there would have to be obviously a public notice on certain things, changes to those bylaws. So we'll take all of that information, and staff will report back.
Any questions on the, on the motion at all? Having seen none, all those in favor of the motion?
Yeah, referral.
Motion, please. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Now, members of council, we could have a motion to go beyond 11 o'clock, moved by Counsel DiDati, seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. All those in favor, motions carried. Thank you. Counsel DiDati?
Yes, your worship. I would ask if we could, through you, have staff from Parks and Recreation give us an update on the Pied Piper program. We had some information floating around, and so we could, they could update council.
Do you want to report, or do you like a verbal, yes?
Yeah, just a verbal, your worship.
Okay. Counsel, yes.
Through, through your worship, I'll see. Just some general background, that it's a summer program of Parks Recreation Culture that's been around for approximately 25 years. It is a free program, and it's designed for children that are ages five to 10. And we rotated a number of parks throughout the summer. And it's approximately 25 years in, in making. And we started it last week, and they're two-hour sessions, and we run until August 22nd. We promote it annually in a leisure guide. It's on our website, and we have flyers. What we did in early 2008 is, for the first time, staff conducted a preliminary analysis on this program to start getting ready for summer 2008. And while the budget is 15-8, what we did, we did find through our, our starting analysis is that we had needs, a number of program enhancements suited data that we needed, as well as some significant investment in staff training. So we started to look at how we could improve this, enhance it, and continue to have a partnership with respect to our model of community development in our community. So with that analysis, given that the budget was quite higher than actually the 15-8 that's in our budget, which council approves, we looked at some solutions, including training. And from that, we evolved into a partnership, continuing a partnership, because we evolved into us actually hiring the staff and delivering the program directly. As a pilot, and a one-time pilot for 2008, because we had looked at piggybacking training with a community partner, the Y, it was initiated that possibly we could partner with the Y, and we felt that that was a very good fit. So we initiated the program. We're currently now collecting data and stats on it, starting last week. We hope from this analysis that we will be able to, A, enhance the program for 2009, continuing it to be free, and find additional partners, which may actually be corporate partners that can help us offset some of the additional costs. Or alternatively, if it's not successful in this partnership, reinstated as a city direct program. However, we're quite confident, based on even the numbers last week, even with the rain date, that we've got a viable partnership in place, but obviously we need to evaluate that. We feel that this is obviously a commitment to our community development model and working with partners. And what we would do is, once we have the data, and with, hopefully by the end of September at the latest, we could bring back a report to council in early October or November outlining the success or opportunities that we've raised through the partnership in summer 2008, and outline a future opportunity going forward. Because we believe that a free program of this nature is fundamental to the service we provide, and we're hoping that we would not only sustain the program, but expand it particularly in areas of our community that are really at need. So that in summary is the background. If there's any additional questions, I'd be pleased to address them.
Counsel DiDati? Okay, fine. Counsel Peter Angelo?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. And I'm not sure whether or not council was able to read the sports section last Friday, but a Niagara Falls resident was successful, your worship, in, in gaining a national title. This gentleman, Mike Pickering, I guess is originally from the Toronto area, but is relocated to Niagara Falls. He's a trap shooter, went into, went into the Canadian National Trap Shooting Championships in Hamilton last Sunday, and he won the national title. Amazingly enough, these little traps fly through the air at 90 kilometers an hour, and he was able to hit 274 to 275 of them to win the national title. So he's a Canadian champion, worship, and I think it would be only fitting if we ask him to come down here to council and recognize him.
I agree. We'll extend the invitation to him, and hopefully acknowledge him as such. Okay? Thank you for bringing it to attention. That's good. Any other new business? Motion adjourned by Counsel Carey, seconded by Counsel Mays. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.